Good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock and I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with a salute to the flag and I was wondering if Mac Rossi could lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now move into roll call. Madam Clerk?
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair. Mike Clark.
Present.
Marius Garcia.
Here.
Clara Andreola.
Present.
Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas.
Here.
And Deputy District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move into the invocation by Mr. Bruce Parks.
I am deeply humbled and honored to be having this opportunity. Thank you, Commissioners. All rise. Let us pray.
It's not mandatory to rise, by the way, but yes, sir, go ahead.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we commit this meeting to you. Come and reveal your will in every aspect of our life. And as we discuss the affairs of our community, we ask for your will to be done. Show us your purposes. Enlighten us that we may know how you want us to accomplish our tasks. We desire your glory and blessing in all we do. Direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path. Let your will be done as we plan and make decisions. Father God, we seek your help today. Come and let your wisdom fall upon us. Give us clarity so that we can effectively tackle each part of today's agenda. Reveal problem areas and show us the best solutions that will apply. Point your eyes to every positive outcome. Let these favorable results and developments encourage every heart in this room. Dear God, help us apply your wisdom as we decide on certain matters and make plans. We ask this in the name of your son, who taught us to pray, and please join in. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you very much. We will now move into public comment, item number four. Ms. Kate Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public comment is heard under this item and is limited to three minutes per person. It may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. And comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Stephanie Sellers, followed by Charles Albright. Stephanie Sellers, she's signed on online. Charles Albright, followed by Terry Brooks.
Hello. My name's Charles Albright. I'm a river advocate. I've sent you folks an offer to go down the river and see what's going on with it as far as safety and look at what we're trying to get improved as far as access and trails and things like that. And then I also wanted to talk to you about many of the other things going on upstream. So, starting at State Line, there's a dam there for the steamboat ditch that is super hazardous and nobody runs it and it's really dangerous. Steamboat ditch, people do not wish to talk about doing anything about it. It has no fish ladder. I was hoping that you, since you're Washoe County and it's in your county, could perhaps get funds from the state during the next legislature to achieve a remodel for that or come up with another way of getting their water into their ditch and then continuing to have a safe river. Next one downstream is Ambrose Dam. That's basically an abandoned dam that's been in the river for way over 100 years. And we would like to see if you could get, again, funding from the legislature, excuse me, legislatures to remove it. It's super hazardous. It's got metal and rebar and collects trees and stuff like that and it's dangerous. The locals want to keep it for swimming and fishing, but it's still going to be a good place to swim and fish when it's gone. And then the next place is basically Chalk Bluff. It's a Tumwa dam that was built as a lowhead deal legally back in the 80s, I believe. And it was, so they modified it after I complained and then put a 45-degree angle on it. It's still dangerous. Anybody that's tubing on the river never has a life jacket or a helmet. And if they go over it and flip over backwards, which is the way most tubers go, they're going to hit their head and get hurt. So, we're hoping that you might modify it to make it more like a White Water Park feature, just one or two simple changes. Then the next place down is Chalk, or Glendale Dam. They just rebuilt it again for the second time and it's still very, very hazardous. And they do not have a portage route around it. It's just insane that that is still there and hasn't been remodeled to be safer, but then again, engineers designed it. So, the only way around it really right now is to try and enter the Eastman Lake ditch passage, which is kind of currently blocked by a boom. And then also got a dam, a bridge that's too high or too low above the river to actually do it safely. And I was hoping that somebody could work on getting that fixed. Then the real big thing is your Tumwa dams. You and Truckee, you and Reno and Sparks all own Tumwa. And those dams that they have are antiquated. We're in the process of removing dams like this over, off of rivers for...
Thank you, Mr. Albright.
Terry Brooks, followed by Mac Rossi.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to address trying to adapt to experiencing hunger in the case of homelessness. I have always tried my best to eat a healthy diet. And when I discover any new kind of food, I just can't wait to try it. For decades, I used to grow my own gardens, so then I became really used to eating a whole lot of natural, fresh produce. But if I was homeless and didn't have a garden or a kitchen, then it would probably be junk food, to which I would be switching. And if I was homeless and couldn't afford to buy it, then even though I'd be really hungry, I wouldn't be able to try it. I'm really slow when it comes to adapting to any kind of change. So, for me to try to adapt to hunger would be really strange. You have to eat a lot of food to be physically active. So, if you're hungry and don't eat much, you can't be physically active. So, it would be difficult to even walk somewhere if you even knew that free food would be available there. All living beings need food to stay alive. Without food to eat, they cannot survive. If you don't have anything to drink as well as nothing to eat, that's a poor situation that's really hard to beat. It's bad enough if you are heading towards starvation, but especially in the summer with nothing to drink and you're heading toward dehydration. Of all the problems of homelessness, hunger and thirst are the hardest to adapt to and are by far the worst. It's hard to adapt to hunger. There is no doubt about it. In fact, it makes me hungry just standing here talking about it. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today and I look forward to coming back because I've still got a lot more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, our poet laureate.
Mac Rossi, followed by Paul White.
My name is Mac Rossi. Commissioners, good morning. Bear with me a second. I just came from the dentist where I got that gas or that nitrate. That stuff is great. If you haven't tried it, they could have taken all my teeth out this morning, so bear with me a little bit. There's two items I'd like to address. The first is, I was part of the leadership program and honored to be part of it. I can't tell you enough the adjectives to describe the information each department of the county I visited in part. I'd like to thank you, the Commissioners, Eric Brown, for his support to make this program for information and a rewarding experience. I'd like to thank all the county staff that set up the organized, conducted, and organized and conducted the program. You'll see that it's not just a job for them, it was a labor of love. Again, I thank you and I am so happy and honored to be selected as a participant in that great program. Second, last week I attended a county presentation rebuilding the hopes for Washoe homeless, which I found very much inspiring to see what the county was doing to help the homeless and what they have accomplished. One item was suggested since the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and the county has placed an ordinance in place for the homeless vehicles not to be parked anywhere in the city or county area. The suggestion was to set aside an area like the county fairgrounds, to which I believe is only fully used one or two times a year for the homeless. This would be a place for the homeless to live in their vehicle. And this is not a parking lot for these folks. But once they're there, the county could bring in a program that could, they could receive the same results that they get when they go to the care campus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Paul White, followed by Roger Edwards.
If it's going to be anything like what's presented there, the presentation you're going to hear on what's really going on with the homeless situation here is going to be absolute omissions, half-truths, and outright lies. After years and years of a booming, growing homeless population, I would defy all the organizations and private ones and Karma Box, et cetera, to show one individual you'd identify as a success after hundreds of millions of dollars spent. The whole program is such an absolute fraud. This is 50 years for me in working with homeless and as an individual taking, doing what I would guess pretty much nobody working for cares campuses ever done, which is take one with their own money, pull them off the street, and get them going. And when they talk about successes, I saw in Grant's PowerPoint that was published, that they talked about like successes. There's no successes. Safe camp, they can use drugs and they do in there. And if they get caught, they get 48 hours out. They can go out on the sidewalk and use them anytime they want and come back in. And then success is putting them into an apartment. There's been two deaths in the last few weeks there. You're just giving an apartment to addicts because by taking the federal money instead of funding it like the Gospel Sparks, Gospel Mission does, Reno Sparks, you're absolutely giving them no way to ever get out of the life they're in. Homeless are not a special minority group or this maudlin documentary that was funded that put out there. It's totally missing. I would ask for the second time, the council, you're giving Grant whatever he needs to present this morning. Education Crusade would ask for the exact same time to present to you the opposite way. And I'm happy to announce that tentatively, Education Crusade, we've got an agreement with Grant to publicly debate this within the next month, and I would really invite you all to come. It's just, and the bottom line that makes it the hardest to palate is, Grant's a friend of mine. I have all the respect in the world for what he personally did to pull his own life together. And when we talk and I ask him, and he was hardcore addict, crime homeless down in Vegas. And I said, if you and your bottom had received the same kind of program that you're offering these people here, where would you, what would have happened? He said, I'd be dead or in prison. Ask him that. Ask him that.
Roger Edwards, followed by Stephanie Sellers.
Good morning, fellow public servants. Roger Edwards, for the record. Please enter my comments in the permanent record. We've had a revised statute. Several things, I just want to remind everybody, I'm here as a non-registered, non-paid lobbyist, although this isn't technically lobbying, I don't think, for you when you're in the meeting. But anyway, I'm still here worried about the public. 50-year resident of Washoe County and I am shocked. $1,122 million budget that we're going to walk through. And I just have to hope that my main man assessor, Clark, got a chance to take a look at all this and see what kind of crap they put in there. Can you, there's really no way you can trim that down to under $1 billion? I don't know. Those numbers don't make any sense anymore. And I understand that every time I have to put a $100 bill into my gas tank on my truck. And I know I'm not the only one. Anybody with a full-size vehicle feels the same pinch I do. A billion, 122 million plus. Wow. Really, we can't do anything better than that? Unbelievable. Anyway, you know, the homeless situation, I have a partner, Paul White, he's doing, he's got a program that could solve the homeless situation in Washoe County if you would just try to listen to what he's got to say and try to implement some of his stuff. You know, the only reason I was in trouble as a kid is because I had my dad's boot up my butt. I didn't, I had to worry more about coming home from getting thrown out of school than what I heard what I had at school. And I don't think these people that are homeless have a real good view of their alternatives. And if you'd listened to Mr. White, he's got a program for you that works. And I'm just wishing that you folks would be responsible managers of the public interest and cut money wherever you can. All right? Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Stephanie Sellers, followed by Roger Chamey.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Sellers. I'm Associate Director of Development for the Truckee Meadows Community College Foundation. And I'm here today to thank Commissioner Herman personally, on behalf of Veterans Upward Bound, for your gift again to them. Thank you so much for supporting our veterans and making a difference in their lives. That's what we try to do at Truckee Meadows Community College. We try to take people that perhaps are on their last, you know, they need help. And we try to provide them with an affordable education and everything that they need to be successful citizens in this great city and county of ours. So, I'm sorry that Robert Hernandez could not be here today. He's actually hosting a veterans conference here in Reno. But you were stuck with me and I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And you will be receiving a certificate in the mail to recognize your ongoing support of our veterans. Oh, that was quick mail. It wasn't even Pony Express. So, anyway, thank you so much and thank you for all you do for our Veterans Upward Bound program. It's absolutely appreciated.
Thank you.
Roger Chamey, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning. In the aftermath of the 2020 general election taught us anything, at least it revealed the depth of skepticism that a significant portion of Americans had in its outcome. In fact, that skepticism prompted the coining of the terms of election denialism and election deniers. And if the pundits and so-called experts are to be believed, the percentage of deniers has grown and continues to grow. If that's the case, and there's no reason to believe it isn't, then arguably, the next general election in November will very well precipitate a crisis unlike anything we've seen in the history of the United States. Because if enough voters doubt that election's outcome and believe it to be fraudulent, fixed, rigged, illegal, unconstitutional, pick your own pejorative, they won't accept it. And if they don't accept it, they will consider the resulting government to be illegitimate. And if that happens, well, there goes the ballgame. Sooner rather than later, there won't be any point in having elections at all. To its credit, following the 2022 election, the registrar of voters hired the think tank, called the Elections Group, to prepare an after-action report titled "2022 Election Operational Review." I've read it and for the most part agree with its recommendations aimed at, quote, "enhancing the operational effectiveness and accuracy of the administration of elections in Washoe County." However, nowhere in its 80 pages did I read anything regarding what steps could or should be taken to ease the concerns of the inevitable skeptics as to the legitimacy of the next election's outcome. At the end of its report, the Elections Group recommended that a small team of stakeholders, such as observers or political party representatives, be brought into the discussions. I agree somewhat, except that the team shouldn't limit itself to observers and political party reps, but should actively recruit nonpartisans, independents, ordinary voters, and so-called election deniers as well. Its goal should be to anticipate and preemptively cure voters' concerns about the next election's outcome and thus ensure and restore faith in our system. Therefore, I propose the registrar and the commission immediately assemble such a team. The Gen primaries are way too close and could be a, well, shakedown cruise, for lack of a better term, for the far more consequential general election in November. And if anybody doesn't think that the 2024 general election will be consequential, they just haven't been paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Gwen Schwab.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments and to the minutes verbatim. As an election questioner, I'm still waiting for Commissioner Herman's election integrity to be brought forth before the Commissioners for a vote. It's, reading through some of the emails that I have, I find that it's very, very similar to that which Governor Lombardo has requested. So, it's very interesting that at least three of the Commissioners aren't interested in having it put forth. As we know, that three of the Commissioners voted for paying global interest to come in and run our elections. I love the "forgive those who trespass against us" part of the comments. I had a huge sign for a U.S. Senator candidate on my fence. It was there for six weeks. No rule violations. However, one day after placing a candidate's sign for someone who I support for commission, I received a rule violation. I'm just making a statement because I find it very interesting. We know who, I'm sure we know who it was. I'm going to quickly talk about the budget because I may not be here when it comes up. But last year, when we had this outrageous budget, which was voted on by three of the Commissioners and passed, in comparison to other counties in the U.S., similar in our size, it is two to three times that. Why? And why do you pass it? Why do you continually pass it? It's very nice to see this week that we don't have the sheriffs sitting back in the back. They're out doing what they really should be doing and hopefully catching criminals. Last but not least, optics is very, very important. And Chair Alexis Hill should resign as the chair while she is running for election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gwen Schwab, followed by Audrey Bergman.
My name is Gwen Schwab and I am from the Cold Springs area. And we are requesting additional funding to help in our area. I've lived in this area, in the Cold Springs area, for seven years. And I use the Cold Springs Family Center about three times a week. And most of the time, it is for pickleball. If you are not familiar with pickleball, it is the fastest-growing sport in the world. There are tournaments everywhere. People are actually going online to book vacations to make sure that they have pickleball courts in the area where they're going. It's an easy game to learn. We often have new people and we can pull them in, teach them a few things, and usually they're playing the game in just a short time. And it's very addicting. We have a lot of people in our area. There's no limiting factors for pickleball: gender, age, or ability. One of our team members is actually an amazing 80-plus-year-old. And we have approximately 35 people that have showed up for pickleball over the last few months, but only four get to play on our one court. Now, pickleball has a golden rule to it, and it says participants are expected to be true team players prioritizing fairness and cooperation over simply winning a point. And it's a wonderful sport. It brings a lot of camaraderie in our area. And so, we are asking for funding to help us have pickleball courts that could also double as tennis courts, basketball courts, volleyball courts in Cold Springs. The nets that we use now are all donated. The stand for the nets donated, the balls donated. We have a couple of paddles that have been donated. We don't even have a pickleball court in our area. We play in a very small gym that we share with others that have activities going on. And so, I would like to share, out of a book, "Pickleball for All," it's a quote by Rachel Simon. And she says, quote, "To millions of players like myself, pickleball is far more than just a sport. Pickleball is a community, a support system, a lifeline. It's a world full of warm, inclusive people who may differ in age, background, and experience level, but are connected by their love of the game," close quote. Again, it's a fastest-growing sport. Seniors are no longer sitting at home alone with the companionship of only the TV. We all share a connection. We have petitions that we've signed. We have over 175,000. And we would really like, ask that you put Cold Springs at the top of your consideration list. The funding will be well-spent for years and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have staff work with Ms. Schwab and see what, so we can see what those plans are.
Audrey Bergman, followed by Scott Finley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Audrey Bergman and I have the honor and privilege to serve one of our community's great not-for-profit organizations, Sierra Nevada Journeys. We are on your agenda today, so I wanted to offer some background. Sierra Nevada Journeys started in the back of the old Rock Sport Climbing Gym off Audion Silverado, Silverada in 2006. Our origin story is that our founder was with a group of Reno students near Lake Tahoe when one of them pointed at the water and asked, "Are there sharks in that ocean?" Since that day, our vision has been to transform lives by building curiosity, confidence, and connections to nature, especially for students who are traditionally underserved. Sierra Nevada Journeys serves the community through outdoor STEM and youth development programs. These outdoor programs take place at local nature areas such as Gleana Creek Regional Park, Oxbone Nature Study Area, and at our residential camp about 45 minutes from Reno, near the Feather River in Plumas County. So, why are we important in this community? First of all, recent studies by the Kaiser Family Foundation show that children spend seven hours per day on screens compared to four to seven minutes per day of unstructured time outdoors. Second, despite a return to normal over the past two years, students in Washoe County are continuing to struggle from the long-lasting effects of distance learning. Test scores indicate significant learning gaps in literacy, math, and science. And those gaps are even more profound for students of color and those facing financial barriers. Third, there is a tremendous need for STEM-based learning in Nevada as job growth in STEM disciplines is outpacing graduation rates in those fields. For many children in our community, the chance to aspire to a successful career in STEM can be unfathomable. And with STEM careers compensating twice as much as non-STEM careers, comfort and confidence in STEM provides an excellent opportunity to lift children from low-income families out of the poverty cycle. Last year... Last year, with funding from the Washoe County Commission, we developed a new outdoor and STEM education program at Sun Valley Regional Park. Through that very successful pilot, we worked with hundreds of students in District III. Through post-program evaluation, we found that 85% of students had never visited the park before, 69% had never been on a hike before, and 85% hoped to return to Sun Valley Regional Park. Because this program had such a huge impact on the youth we serve, we hope to continue into the 2024-2025 school year. To sustain our programs, we rely on program fees and fundraising. The resolution you have in front of you today will help continue bringing outdoor science education to youth in Washoe County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Scott Finley followed by Nicholas St. John.
Please enter my comment into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the financial management and comptroller career field of the United States Air Force. The Board of County Commissioners must allow a parallel hand count of upcoming and future elections. Electronic voting wasn't used in the United States until around the 2000s. This means that for roughly the past 200 years, the United States has hand-counted ballots guaranteeing the accuracy of election results. To not continue this practice implies that hand-counting is inaccurate, effectively abandoning over 200 years of American historical presidents that says otherwise. This is called the ballot counter 5,000. Anyone who has ever worked at a bank or in a vault will be familiar with one of these devices. So what happens when you spend about $40 on one of these? So typically, if you work at a bank or in a vault, you would count these through the bill counter two times, and then what you would do is you would hand-count it twice afterwards. My point is that if parallel hand-counting is good for banks of money, then it's good enough for elections and ballots. So for this reason, this board needs to allow parallel hand-counting for the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's your turn to public speak. You're up. You're up for a public comment. I will deliver that. Go ahead.
Mr. St. John, please.
I need to start the--
Please listen to the clerk. She's conducting public comment.
Are you denying my right to give you a document?
I will give the document as soon as you start to speak. I need to start the timer, please.
Oh, okay. And if you would change the camera angle back to the front? All right, I guess we're speaking now, all right? My name's Nicholas St. John, for the record. A nonfictional, noncorporate, living human being, living man, natural man. Before you, you have a notice of breach of contract. You have with you the oath, a private commercial contract that will deliver to you on the 11th of March. By denying my First Amendment rights with my sign, that's a breach of your contract because you have sworn an oath to uphold the U.S. and the Nevada constitutions. Every time they change the camera angle away from me where I have the right to have a sign, that's a breach of contract. Also, we've been through this, and I've, every time I go through the metal detector that is unconstitutional, you do not have a warrant, there is no written policy, there is no written procedure, and even there was, there's no written document that can override the Fourth Amendment rights for us to be secure in our persons and not be searched just to come into these chambers. Okay? I'm demanding that you remove the metal detector, and I'm demanding that you cure this issue about the First Amendment right being violated. Clara, good to see you again, but we gave you the last meeting--
Mr. St. John, please address the full board.
Okay. Clara, good to see you here again, considering we--
Mr. St. John, please address the full board. Thank you.
Then you guys can all listen to it. We gave you, we gave you information, you were in violation of the NRS codes, and we demanded that you resign. The fact that you're still here is now a breach of contract, so you too will be getting a notice of breach of contract. Okay? As far as anything else goes, we are here because, I've been coming in here for over three years, and the reason we come here is because you're not doing your job. So far, we've not been able to hold you accountable for any of that. That is all going to change. So Clara, you're going to have the ability to step down gracefully, or eventually you're going to find yourself in court where you could--
Mr. St. John, please address the full board.
--find yourself not just only in breach of contract, but also with the impersonating an officer well over 70 times. So anyway, in closing, I demand that you, Alexis Hill, give us a public town hall. We've been asking for the redress of grievances now for three years. You have not one time given us a public place to come and have an open dialogue, not a three-minute opportunity to shut us down.
Heather Borkish followed by Patrice Clach.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Heather Borkowski. I'm with the Adopt a Vet Dental Program, and I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support for our program. You truly give a veteran his life back one smile at a time. And Vice Chair Herman, with your generous donation, you will fund a whole month in our clinic, which will be able to serve 45 veterans. So thank you guys so much for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice Clach followed by Matthew Wilke.
Good morning. It's wonderful for me to have so many veteran groups here today. My name is Patrice Clach. I'm a fifth-generation Navadan, and I have the honor of working at the Veterans Guest House. We are a small, local nonprofit. We served over 7,000 nights, we call it, that's how we measure, night stays with veterans and their families, and I'm here today to thank Commissioner Herman for her gift and that you are ensuring that our veterans and their families receive the medical care they need at no cost. We have several programs where we provide the lodging for free, daily meals, transportation support. We have a personal care assistant now that is funded, and she is able to check veterans that live alone, that need surgery, who would not be able to get it because they don't have a designated adult to check them out after anesthesia. She is able to go pick them up, bring them back, make sure they understand the checkout, post-op procedure recommendations. And we also have emergency support. So when a veteran coming from Carlin recently suffered, he has severe disabilities, and he, his radiator was overheating every half hour. He'd pull over, he has Parkinson's, but we were able, when he finally got here, we were able to get his car into the mechanics, get him a new radiator, so when he was done with his stay with us, he could safely return home. And that's what your support does. So on behalf of all of our guests, their families, thank you so much. And have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Matthew Wilke followed by Chris Garvey.
Good morning, Chair Hill and members of the Commission. My name is Matthew Wilke, for the record. I hate telling my story, but I feel the need after this morning. I am a success story with helping out someone who is homeless. I was a homeless teenager living in my car. Here, I lived in a 1988 Ford Thunderbird. I was taken in by a family in Spanish Springs who was giving me the opportunity to go to school. I now have a very successful pharmacy career and own my own home. Is grant perfect? Absolutely not. Is the CARES campus perfect? No. Safe Camp? Absolutely not. But these are tools in the toolbox, and we are all about tools here, as I'm learning. So with that said, I would like to see this commission agendize the possibility of a safe park, safe parking, or direct staff to explore how this program could successfully be implemented, possibly with the expansion of the CARES campus that's currently going on. We have heard from Officer Sol Farino, Ms. Circe, and Mr. Denton himself here in these chambers, that one-pronged system is not the approach. So we need to have, explore other avenues, other success stories. I can see implementing this safe parking could also reduce the vulnerability of crime exploitation, which was brought up during the meetings. Exploitation of these people, having them in a secure, safe place could cut down on that exploitation that was mentioned. It could also foster a community of support among the residents with mental well-being, with those connections. It can help alleviate strain on those emergency services and those calls for services that have been mentioned. By having a designated place, it could help eliminate those calls to service out to the end-of-the-world camp, out to those services, places as well. It could also serve as a transitional space with access to the CARES campus, to Hope Springs, to those other sources that the Safe Camp currently has. So hopefully, these are other examples that can be used to hopefully implement a safe parking to go along with those other ordinances. To end on a positive note, I would like to say, the language access thing I saw up front, I think that's fantastic. Your programs that you implement here are only as good as those who can access them. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Garvey followed by Sandy Tibbet.
Hi, I'm Chris Garvey, and I am a candidate for Spark City Council Ward 1. Today, I'm here seeking clarity on the recommended fiscal '25 budget as item number seven. I reached out to the comptroller's office through their contact number under 311. I also called the number for the budget manager and also the number for the financial, chief financial officer listed on the agenda. All went to voicemail. I also emailed my commissioner, Ms. Garcia, but have not received an answer or reply yet. Eventually, Ernie from 311 called back and told me that according to federal regulations, that certain topics are not subject to open meeting law and cannot be responded to. I can only assume he thought I was wanting to know about labor contract planning. Once I explained I wanted to know if the recommended general fund transfer of $3.4 million to the senior fund would result in an increase, decrease, or a maintenance of the current level of funding, he relented and said, "If I sent him an email, he would try to get an answer." This morning, just a few minutes ago, I received an answer saying that, "Of course, they could answer my questions, but not until after today's meeting. If I had any other questions, please feel free to let them know." How is the public supposed to know what the proposed budget actually is when staff won't answer questions, board meetings don't allow for dialogue with the voters, and the commissioners, with the exception of Mike Clark and Jeanne Herman, don't answer questions or discuss items or answer emails? The backup states the board's vision set guidance in the following focus areas because they care: serving seniors, mental health, capital improvements. But then go online and try and look at the, you look at the agenda item, and it talks about, oh, we're having lower revenue expectations than we thought and rising costs. So what is it? Seniors need straight talk. Are seniors going to receive more dollars or less? Are homeless going to receive more dollars? And are you going to continue to double-dip into the senior budgets for meals and healthcare? Here's some straight talk from a senior. I'm Chris Garvey. I've had enough, and it's time for seniors to vote incumbents out this time.
Ms. Tibbet has documents I will distribute.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sandy Tibbet for the record. So did you know the United States, in all caps, imagine that in all caps, isn't a country, but it's a corporation? For proof, look at subsection 15 and 15A entitled "28 U.S. Code, Section 3002," and you will see this sentence. "United States" means a federal corporation, highlighted right there. The corporation was created for the District of Columbia, AKA Washington, D.C., which is a foreign territory, not a state, via the Act of 1871. The United States Corporation operates under private international law with their own corporate constitution. What most people do not know about the United States, Inc., is that it is a foreign corporation, which means the politicians working in Washington, D.C., and nearly every politician, judge, attorney, police officer, and government agent working throughout the USA are foreign agents. So if you voted for them, you have committed treason against the republic. We are a republic for the United States of America, the 50 union states. And did you know statutes are not laws? Statutes are corporate policies. Let that sink in. Our government loves acronyms: FBI, CIA, FDA, WHO. All federal corporations are funded by the taxpayers under, all caps, the United States Corporation. Also, did you know God in the God We Trust displayed on our ferns, Federal Reserve notes, backed by paper, this is paper, backed by paper bonds, is an acronym for Government Ordnance Department? So when we say in God We Trust, we are actually saying, in Government Ordnance Department we trust. Did you know our country's financial system was designed to make Americans debt slaves to their own government? Americans' freedoms are an illusion. Our rights and our republic have been manipulated and destroyed by our government to make Americans bill-free. We must remove ourselves from their corporation before we will ever be free. Today, I accept your offer of a contract under commercial law via your oath. I echo the demands of Nicholas St. John, and I demand, and I also demand, I'm adding this, I demand Vice Chair Herman's election resolution be added to the agenda immediately. I encourage all residents to do the same.
Renee Rosentus followed by Penny Brock.
Hello, Renee Rosentus.
Renee Rosentus, for the record. I want to address just a few things. Number one, the senior budget, that's listed for $3.4 million for the next year. What can you do with $3.4 million? I mean, the animals get more than that. I have nothing against animals, but they get more than that. So I would really like to see statements, I would like this to be put on the agenda. I would like statements once a month of the expenditures for our seniors. And the seniors are concerned. They're concerned that there are going to be a new class of homeless. And number two, I went to, during the caucus, I actually was able to get my hands on ballots for the disabled, those that qualified for the ADA. And I went to several places to try to reach the seniors. Some of them wouldn't even let me in, some of the senior apartments. And unfortunately, the Veteran Assisted Living Home on, oh, what is it called? Baliborne. I had to go there four times to finally get in. I had to get upset. And they only gave me two people. They wouldn't put anything on the bulletin boards to announce that I had that in my hand to accommodate them. And this should not be allowed. These are people that served our country. Many of them gave life and limb for our country. And this should, that was just an atrocity, that I ran into that. The other thing is, we need to hand-count the ballots. This practice of the illegals being able to come into our country and getting driver's licenses so that they can register to vote is against our constitution. It is wrong. It certainly sounds like this is planned to, to control the outcome of the election. So this should not be allowed. It needs to be stopped. And I thank you, Jeanne Herman. And she needs a microphone that you can turn the volume up for her. Stop trying to make her like, sound like she's incompetent. You can control the volume.
Penny Brock, followed by Teddy Craig.
Penny Brock, for the record. On March 14th, the Supreme Court took a case dealing with the election that happened in Arizona with Carrie Lake and Mark Fincham. They took the case because new evidence has come forward, very serious evidence. They expedited giving it a docket number. Since then, there's been a motion to expedite, which the Supreme Court has accepted. There's been technical expert exhibits filed. There's also been an amicus brief filed. Along with this, they've asked for an injunction, once the Supreme Court begins to hear the case, to review it, that no electronic voting machines will be allowed until they make a decision. That would include the Dominion Electronic Voting System used here in Washoe County. I have mentioned this to you before. Should that injunction be honored, which could happen within a week or so? What are you going to do for the June primaries? I've already warned you about this, so I'm updating you on this. This case will shock the world. The decryption keys found in the voting machines is like a bank telling the public they have the most secure vault in the world. And then taping the combination on the wall next to the vault door. Even worse, key logging features that would record system activity showing such control can also be manipulated or disabled, thereby rendering any penetration of this system nearly undetectable. That's on page 13 of the filing. The news of our Supreme Court case and the evidence that has been gathered from multiple states and electronic voting system is getting around. It's not possible any longer to deny the electronic voting machines and tabulators are irrevocably unsafe in our elections. The attorney for this case, representing Carrie Lake and Mark Fincham, has said, any malicious actor can take control of the entire voting system and create a fake election. We have been lied to. We cannot use these machines in our primary or general election. The decryption keys are in our voting machines down the hall here. This is a problem. This is critical infrastructure that you are responsible for. It is considered infrastructure, and that is one of the first jobs of the county commission, is infrastructure. Thank you.
Teddy Craig, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was told that part of this meeting was about me. I'm one of your homeless, well, was one of your homeless. I also did, sure, sir, no problem. I also did quite a few time in your prison system. Now I'm out, been out four years. I have a nice job, beautiful job. I mean, living very comfortable. God has really blessed me. But I had a half-brother down here at this CARES campus and homeless. I get down there almost every day. And I hear some stuff that's not right compared to me being down there in the mix. I thank them for the CAREC campus. They did put my brother in the home, but he's doped out. I had two clients that they put in the home. They died. Because they given them a place to stay, but my taxpayer money is still paying for them. Why they ain't encouraging them to get a job? At least while you down there, they can stay down there five, six, seven years, however long it takes. But if they encourage them to get a job, they give them a foundation to where when they get out, they're independent, or they become dependent on themselves and, you know, because I'm here, I'm in front of you right now, and I was there. I got a job. You know, even though I went to prison to click my head to straight, but I got a job. I'm living very okay right now. I'm trying to get this place at $195 Hubbard, but California keep buying me out. I want to open up a home for women coming out of state to change people, places, and things, and to get on their feet. You know, that got closed too. So there's a, I have a plan. I have an idea. I have it because I'm in the mix, not because I'm, y'all looking down at it, figuring out, well, we can do this from up here. It's like the undercover boss, y'all so high, y'all really don't know what's going on down here. I'm gonna be honest, y'all don't know what's going on down here. There's so much drugs, there's so much, I mean, drugs, alcohol, homelessness, they all in the section. I can buy more drugs at CAREC campus than I can buy up on the street. And I compliment Grant, from where he came from to where he's at now. I'm not going to deny that. He struggled, but can, I mean, visit unannounced, and I think y'all will be very surprised. You know, like I said, my name is Teddy Craig. I'm part of Catfish Corporation. I help people when they get out of prison. I do the best I can to give them a kickstart, because I got one, and this is what led me to where I'm at. And, you know, my doors are open to help any way I can. I have an idea. And if anybody want a card, I got some cards. Time don't allow me to present it to y'all, but I have an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Bruce Foster.
Valerie Fianaca, for the record, and I'm going to take it a whole different direction, because that's how I go. You all need to catch up on your budget with Washoe County School District. I went to the school district meeting last week, and their budget is $1.4 billion with a B. And they serve 59,000 students and expect to lose 1,500 next year. You serve 500,000 on a budget that's less than theirs. And they're already in the hole by $1.7 million in the first three months of this year. But not to worry, they've already fixed that deficit, and they did it by cutting positions in the special ed department. Let's talk about equity, shall we? Those who cannot advocate for themselves are going to suffer. Seems like that's always how it works. Doesn't matter if it's here or if it's at the school district. Those who cannot fight back suffer the most: seniors, the homeless, the handicapped, and the poor, which is a growing segment of our society, mostly due to our government. And I'm not saying that with malice. I'm not saying that because I don't like any of you. I like all of you on a personal level. But our government is oppressive at this point and making us poorer by the day. Now, on another tack, Sierra Nevada Journeys, thank you, Mary Lou, for giving them money. Anything that gets our kids outside, I'm all over. Whoop, whoop. At Nick Polakides Elementary School, recently, elementary school students were able to hack on their school-issued devices, mind you, we're giving them devices, they were able to hack the security and access Pornhub. So anything that gives the kids less screen time, I'm all over it. And thank you, Mary Lou. And thank you, Jean, for always giving to the best organizations, always.
Bruce Foster, followed by Rebecca Marco.
Yeah, good morning, Bruce Foster, for the record, a citizen of Washoe County. And I wish to state that, welcome to Washoe County, the shopping cart capital of Nevada. And last week, when I was driving around Samarans, there was a gentleman on the corner, a keystone, and I believe it was Fourth Street, and he was flailing his arms all over the place, and I drove by there about an hour later, he was still there. How is that compassionate and understanding how broken the CARES campus is, according to Paul White and what we've seen, and why nobody wants to go there? But that's not why I'm here. It's pretty interesting, this morning, I was, you know, going through news, and up announced was, Nevada Secretary of State announces no evidence of widespread voter fraud after review. The Office of Nevada Secretary of State announced in a new report Monday, there was no evidence of widespread voter fraud in Nevada in recent years, saying a large number of election fraud reports that the Office received did not involve any actual violation of the election law. I was a site coordinator at the presidential caucus, and after a few minutes of chaos, we were able to process close to 800 patriots by paper with a voter ID in two and a half hours. That is phenomenal. So the next one that I saw this morning on X, bring it up here. It is by Victor Jox. Apparently, he's a journalist out of Clark County, Vegas. Nevada Secretary of State Francisco Aguilar releases a report showing 76 instances of double-voting that it labels criminal. Twenty-nine of those criminal cases were closed by SOS with no action. Incredibly, Aguilar tries to downplay the significance of his own report and the possibility of voter fraud. What this report shows is that Nevada elections remain vulnerable to fraud, especially in tight races. So what I'm saying is, is that we're still questioning, as the primary is coming forth, of election integrity. And I know another, a lot of people that are smarter than I have found that to be fact. Thank you.
Rebecca Marco, followed by Alan Munson.
I am Rebecca, or Beck, most people may use Beck, Marco, for the record. I am one of many volunteers at the Cold Springs Family Center for our Family Center Outreach Program that started just a little over a year ago. The bit of a history is, the Cold Springs Family Center is run by the Lifestyle Homes Foundation, and that has allowed us to open up our door and start a weekly senior goods and food drive. I have emailed all of you before inviting you to come out, Commissioner Hill came out, and we are here to say thank you to Commissioner Herman for making and considering us for her discretionary fund donation. I'm sure you see several people in the bright green shirts here to say our thank you. This is a program that we have teamed up. There's a large volunteer group. We serve anywhere between around 100 to, I think our record has been 250 seniors in Cold Springs. We don't ask questions, we don't have any prerequisites. If they need help, they can come in and shop. It has also become a bit of a weekly social hour, where our seniors come early, and they get to sit together and hang out and talk, and then they get to shop together. And it's just, it's wonderful to see our community come together. It really is a big family. 100% of donations, all monetary donations, have gone to buy food, produce, healthier foods. We have an amazing partnership with the Katie Grace Foundation. They donate a ton of food every single week to us, and we do like to purchase and supplement vegetables and fruits and healthier foods for our seniors. So there's also no overhead. This is all just 1% volunteer ran. This is just something that we do with love. And there's many things that people don't realize that we take for granted, like toilet paper. We're able to purchase toilet paper. A lot of people don't realize how important that is. And so it's just something that, it's something that we all love to do. Our seniors matter, and we want them to know that they are a big part of our life, and we love them and appreciate them. And that is why we are so passionate about this project, and we want to say thank you very much. And I believe that there will be a few seniors speaking on the actual item, on the agenda. So thank you for having us, and thank you so much, Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Ms. Marco.
Alan Munson, followed by Victoria Meyer.
Hi, my name is Alan Munson. I'm a resident of Washoe County, and I didn't plan to come up here and speak, but I just felt it was important to share some experiences that I had. A number of years ago, I was working with, a group of us were volunteering, working with homeless people. And one of the things I learned is very important, because I know the amount of money we're spending, is to discern the difference between those people who were open for help, they were, the majority were, because we were giving them money to, to stay over and, you know, have a hotel and that sort of thing. There was another group that just wanted to use us for the help. And then there was a third group that just, I don't want any help, I don't want to change, this is it. So my, as just a citizen here, hoping that you will hear what I have to say, from my own experience, is that it's probably more important to discern what the person wants for help. And I'm, you know, I'm hearing that there's a lot of drugs on, you know, on the CARES campus and other places. That's, that should be a no-no, that, 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 those people, you know, I learned that they just want to continue their lifestyle, and so we shouldn't be using our tax dollars to help promote them, not wanting help. And the other thing is that, as a senior myself, many seniors are part of the poor population or poorer population. And I would encourage the budget to, to help provide services for the seniors. If we discern what the CARES camp and the homeless is, and we could give a little bit more to seniors, that, as a citizen of Washoe County, that would be my hope, that you might hear what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Victoria Meyer.
Excuse me. I just want to, I didn't really plan on coming and speaking today either, but I do want to support what several people have talked about, Janet Butcher and Penny Brock. Janet Butcher, and Penny Brock, and Valerie Fianaca, and a few others, Sandy Tibbet. And regarding the resolution and the elections, I've testified before here that I've witnessed chain of custody being broken, ballots laying in the hallway. I have photos of it, I've filed reports about it. During the '22 election, there were ballots and computers from the polling places laying in the hallway by themselves, in a public hallway here in this building, in front of the ROV office. That's just one small part of the problems we had in '22, and we really do need, you folks really do need to deal with this issue before the primaries. We need to get rid of these machines and get back to common sense voting, and I just urge you to get the resolution from Jean Herman on, on the agenda, and let's get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move into Item 5, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5, our Commissioner and County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us today?
I do. I have one item this morning, which is an upcoming opening for the Planning Commission at-large seat, and that is the one that is for folks that are south of the Truckee River. The seat opens tomorrow, April 17th, and will be open for about four or three weeks, closing on May 6th, and that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I see that Vice Chair Herman has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kind of staying on the subject matter of our public speakers, I have some, some of the same feelings about, about our elections, and I want us to be all respected, and, and I want us to do the right thing. And that's why I have spent time and prepared an election resolution for our, that needs to go before this board and voted on, one way or the other. There are so many things that I've run across, and before I even became a commissioner, and one of the reasons I became a commissioner, there's a lot of people that have told me stories, I mean, they're horror stories, where they weren't able to vote. That happened to me one time, because somebody had allowed somebody to vote in my place. And that was when we had all these things, the protections supposedly. And then other, other people, you know, lots of people that just didn't get to vote for one reason or another, not their fault, they were there, but either they had to leave for work at 8:00, and, and they couldn't stay because they were spending too much time on people that couldn't speak English and, and had a real problem. So, I mean, we've got problems with chain of custody, we've got all the machinery that, that can easily be messed with. I can see how that works. And, you know, there's been, you know, people say that it's just the ROV and the people down there in the ROV's office, and that sort of thing that are mistreated or, or treated rudely, but it's, it's also the people that are the poll watchers, it's people that have a legitimate question about their ballots and, and their ability to get their, the election taken care of. And so, rudeness to voters, I've seen that myself, just watched it. I went in to vote a couple of years ago, and, and they told me I couldn't vote because they couldn't recognize my signature, it wasn't matching. So, I just luckily was able to vote because somebody noticed that I was the commissioner, and they said, "You better let her vote." So, that happened. So, just, you know, with all the dead people on the voter rolls, and, and all these things that people have been bringing to our attention for years, not days, not weeks, not months, but years. And so, that's why I'm, I get rude about wanting my doggone resolution on the, on the agenda. It's not, not fair to the people to, to keep that from them. I mean, I have a list here of people in my district who, I got this list from the ROV's office, and most of them, no ballot was mailed at the last election. All in my district, they never got a ballot. This year, they never, they weren't allowed to vote in, in the election. So, it's, it's just, you know, we've got to stop, stop being so darn sloppy and get this thing done. I mean, it's, this has gone on for way too long, it's, it needs to get handled, it, it really needs to get done, and I can't say it loud enough, I guess. So, this is what our DA's office wrote, and, you know, it's, "Any commissioner may place an item on agenda by sole requesting in a public meeting or by contacting county manager." I did both on many occasions. "And all commissioners will be advised by the county manager as soon as reasonably possible of any commissioner's request to place an item on the agenda." I mean, how clear is that? And then, you know, it's just, you know, why, why are we doing this? What is the reason? Is it like other states, where people kind of get into the ROV's office and maybe, maybe adjust a machine when nobody's looking? Or maybe someone puts a flash drive in, or? I mean, there's so many easy things that can happen, and we are guilty of some of those. And I, I mean, I, I feel guilty that we can't have a decent election and be proud of it. So, I'm off my soapbox on that item for the moment. On item, I just want to make a note, on item 10E2, we're going to take that temporarily off the agenda. It's a donation, but it needs to be, have a little finish work on it. So, thank you for now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. And on 10E2, you just want to pull off the Circle of Life Hospice, right? You want to keep the rest on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Looking to the rest of the board, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a few items I'd like to talk about. One is, a person that owns a barber college in Sparks has volunteered to, at a reduced rate, cut hair at the CARES campus, cut hair at the senior centers. He's filled out all his paperwork. It's been months ago, his name is Greg Fair. I'd like somebody from staff to look into that and find out when we could have a meeting with him to see if he can start helping folks to get haircuts at a reduced rate, and see if that's, he's willing to do that at the senior center and the CARES campus and anywhere else around. So, I think many times, folks feel better if they're, they're looking sharp, got a haircut, looking for a job, whatever. So, he's willing to help that, so, help with that. So, he owns a barber college in Sparks, and he's trying to do some good community service. And I talked to him yesterday, and he, it's been months ago, he says that he filled out the paperwork. So, no one's reached out to him. I'd like to find out what, where we are in that, the progress on that issue. Next, I want to talk about the courthouse security report that I talked about, geez, it seems like months ago, the last time we had a meeting, but I brought this up, the, I forget even the date, I don't have it with me, I think it was in 2019, the court had been reviewed for security purposes, and it's my understanding, from 2019 to, to today, there hasn't been one single one of those recommendations done. I could be wrong, maybe somebody could prove to me that, that I am wrong, but it's my understanding that nothing has been done. And now, I'm hearing through the grapevine that another security assessment has been ordered. Well, we paid for the last one, we didn't do anything that was recommended the last time. Why are we going to throw good money after bad and, and run another security assessment of the facility, and, and then maybe, maybe, or maybe not, implement those recommendations? So, that's a question I have, and I'd like to find out the answer to that. Last, next, I want to talk about the, I want to talk about a particular department here in the county that everybody is impacted by, everyone, you know, there might not be, you could go through your whole life and not have any interaction with the Sheriff's Department, or the DA, or the clerk, or the medical examiner, or the public administrator, or the treasurer, a public defender, alternative public defender, recorder, public administrator. There's people who could literally go through their whole lives and have no interaction with those departments, plus the other 30-some departments that the county has. But there's one particular department that, that everyone has involvement with, whether you own property, whether you don't own property, whether you live in the county, whether you don't live in the county. Everyone has some involvement through the assessor's office. I used to head up the assessor's office, but I want to make sure people understand what's really taking place at the assessor's office. We're talking about the budget. The assessor's job is to value property, and they're responsible for approximately 50% of the property values here in the county. But it isn't just real estate. It's, it's improvements on real estate. It's businesses. They, the, the assessor's office manages about 189,000, a little over 189,000 parcels. Can you think of a property management company that handles that, that many properties? Those are just, I believe, the ones that are improved. There's, there's other properties that aren't improved. So, improved property, unimproved property. That means it could have a warehouse on it, a house, a well, a fence, you name it. There's probably 40 or 50 different points of interest on the assessor's page for each individual property. Fences, wells, septics, any improvement on the properties has value, and the value is pursued by the appraisers there. Where I'm going with this is, and I'll get there in just a second, everybody who comes to this county has involvement with the assessor. How, how could that be? At the airport, at Burning Man, on the highways, if you're driving from Chicago to San Francisco and you stop in this county, and you pull over to a gas station or a fast food restaurant, those fixtures, those business, things that are used in a business, if you stay in a hotel, flat-screen TVs, tables, silverware, plates, frying pans, tanning booths, pizza ovens, if you get a flat tire and they use a machine to change your tire, all of this stuff is valued by the assessor's office. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, the assessor's office is using, is working with a reduced staff, a reduced staff. They used to have over 80 people there before the Great Recession, and now they're hovering in the low 60s of employees there. They're now working on about 50% more property, about 50%, I don't have the exact numbers, but I went over them quickly this morning, about 50% more properties are here in the county than there were 10, 12 years ago, 50% more businesses, and they're working harder with less, less employees there. They've asked for a couple of more employees to help them collect the taxes to fund this massive budget, and they're working very hard. Some of these folks are interested in some time off, spending some time in their hobbies, working with, visiting with their families, doing other things. But here's an example of the county looking at the number, one of the number-one revenue-producing departments in the county, and is reluctant to give these, this, this particular department the staff that they need. Does that make any sense? I mean, I always use this, the analogy, these are like, if, if the county was, was a lumber mill or sawmill, and those were the lumberjacks, they're out collecting the raw product, bringing it back to this factory, and then the, the county takes that money and shifts it around to all the other departments. So, these are the frontline workers, and they need more help over at the assessor's office to find more funds to fund this budget. So, my request is to take a good, hard look at the, the county offices that are generating funds, and help those folks find more funds to make it better for all of us. The second department I want to bring up is the clerk's office. That office generates a lot of funds for the county, and they are also working with fewer folks than they used to have, and they're doing more work. So, they're working harder and with, and not having enough staff to, to really do that. So, somebody needs to have, somebody who's much smarter than I, needs to do a cost analysis to see if we hire two or three more assessors, or two or three more employees at the assessor's office, or two or three more people at the clerk's office, how much that'll be for extra income for the county, and how much extra it'll be for the morale of the staff that works at those offices. So, those are a couple of requests that I have. I'd like to find out how we can get those addressed. And again, everybody's affected by the assessor's office, even if you fly, fly into the airport, and you get off the plane and you buy, and you use the soda machine. All of those machines, all of those fixtures, everything that, even the T-shirt shop, the fixture holding the T-shirts in place for, for customers, that's all taxed by the assessor. All the silverware, do you, do you realize every single fork in a restaurant is supposed to be accounted for? How'd you like to have that job? Okay? As the county continues to grow, we should have proportionate growth of the assessor's office, so the work gets done. That's, they're doing the work of the people over there, is valuing by law, state law, they're doing the work of assessing and evaluating all, all properties, and making sure that all the, all the goods and services that there are other departments are expected to deliver to the public are funded. So, I'm asking that we take a good, hard look at the number of employees at both the clerk's office and the assessor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrea Ulla.
Thank you. I just wanted to give an update. I have been very eager in looking at Washoe County implementing the Checkbook Nevada that was put into place for full transparency of expenditures. The State Controller, Andy Matthews, and I've had many conversations. I'd like to thank the county manager and thank staff for engaging in those conversations and getting closer and closer, hopefully, to bringing this to the board for implementation, so that expenses can be actually viewed at any time by just a click. And I think that that is imperative, that we have that transparency for expenses. And I know that, again, I spoke with Washoe County Controller, Justin Thomas, who has also shared with a meeting, he, he was in statewide with other treasurers, and, and many other counties are also looking at this. So, I'm, I'm eager for that to come forward as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible to the board. I'd also like to give a brief update. I want to commend the sheriff's office. I spoke with Lieutenant Daniel to find out about the efforts of the End of the World Camp, also known as Court of Antiquity, that's in my district. And I just want to share some information that I think is important, given the efforts with the recent ordinance that passed, and the coordination that needs to take place in identifying the proper resources and connecting those that are camping there. It's going to take a little time, but Lieutenant Daniel needs to be commended, along with all the other folks at the sheriff's office, for really looking at addressing this. And I really want to put this in perspective. Two years ago, approximately two years ago, that same encampment had less, twice as less people. So, in other words, we have twice as many people there right now. So in other words, we have twice as many people there right now. Two years ago, when it was clean, three hundred and sixty tons were actually removed. So it's a big, big lift, not only in terms of the people piece and looking at a successful path to connect those resources, but also the efforts that need to be put underway to keep our, you know, ecosystem, especially the Truckee River as an example, as pristine as possible. So I do want to give them recognition. I know that there's a lot of coordination that needs to take place, and I'm hoping that can be done as quickly as possible because it really is impacting our community. I also want to give an update that on April 4th, the STAR program was submitted to the National Association of Counties to be considered for their achievement awards, and I'd like to thank the county manager, staff, chief roper, and acting county manager Kate Thomas, along with Ms. Matiavich, I always get her last name wrong, Cadence, for all of their work on submitting this application. I just think it's important that we recognize a great program that has success and to know that not only it's going to be hopefully implemented statewide, but then to even hopefully get national recognition is, is really welcome. So I'll just keep everybody apprised as we learn more. Thank you.
Thank you for your initiative on that. Commissioner Garcia, do you have anything? Okay. I just have one thing. On Thursday, the IFC, an interim finance committee of the state legislature, approved fourteen point five million dollars for this county to rehab the West Hills Mental Health Care Facility. This is going to open up almost ninety pediatric beds in our community that do not exist today, as well as supporting folks who are on the lowest income bracket in our community to get them mental health care, as well as folks who are in, children who are sex trafficked, getting them the, the support and help that they need. So such an exciting vote, and I want to thank the governor's office for moving that forward and putting that on the agenda. And we are looking to be open in 2026 with that facility. We are hoping to rename it. We don't want to call it Old West Hills anymore, so we'll keep you posted on that new name. But I really want to thank the staff. Assistant county manager, Thomas came, as well as so much of our team, manager Brown, and Ms. Matiavich. When Commissioner Garcia and I were in DC to advocate for our congressional-directed spending that we're hoping to bring to the county, we were with Ms. Matiavich as she was calling and advocating for this program. And I think that through her passion and through, obviously, the incredible work of what this program will be, that's how we made it happen. So I just want to commend the team and thank the state, and I'm so excited that Washoe County will be dipping our toes into mental health care because it's so needed in this community. Any other commissioner announcements or comments? Vice Chair Herman.
Just a quick rundown on the meeting on, with Washington DC, the United States Post Office. We spoke with a Mr. Postrey and Ms. Marshall, and they were in a hurry because they were going to be heading to Congress in the morning, right after our call. And so she, she, they made some comments, the post office being supported by postage income, and that's, that's, and overseas voting was the other thing. And so this is part of the reason why they want to make the big change and move our postal service down there. They tried to explain it to us, and Cadence, again, I'm going to give her credit because she really, really knows her stuff. And so anyhow, they, they said that they were planning to increase packaging, not downsizing. I'm, I'm kind of wondering if, if they can compete with FedEx, UPS, and some of those for packaging. I'm not sure that they, that's a good way to go, but that's just my opinion. So the discussion was about upgrading locally later. And that's, that's pretty much it. And so it's kind of, there was something on the radio this morning on the way in, they're, they're heading to Congress again, so we'll wait and see. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Clark.
I, I had signed in earlier, but I'm not prepared to talk about anything now.
Okay, great. Well, we will close item five and move on to item six, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six is a presentation by Grant Denton, who is the executive director of Karma Box Project. He's here to give us a status on the update of the CARES Campus Safe Camp.
Welcome.
All right, so for the record, I'm Grant Denton with the Karma Box Project. I'm going to try to take a lot of stuff and cram it into about ten minutes, so I'm going to talk fast. If you have any questions, of course. So we started as a grassroots community effort to place free pantry boxes around the community. Our first box was placed in 2018, and now there's over sixty peppered throughout northern Nevada. We became a nonprofit in 2019 and signed our first contract with One Truckee River in June of twenty-two, 2020, to do outreach around the Portland Lou, Broadhead Park. Programs that we are doing right now is outreach with the City of Sparks, outreach in Carson City. We're contracted with the City of Reno to do outreach. We have a karma crib, which is transitional housing where we partner with the Veterans Guest House. We operate the Safe Camp, which is a non-congregate shelter, and we do the grid program, which is reentry from the streets or from prison, where we exercise with folks and get them volunteering back in the community. Projects with Washoe County. We started in, from 2020 to 2022, we were doing an outreach program along the river where we would grab folks up that were living there, have them help us clean the river in exchange for gift cards. We utilize this as a vehicle to get to know folks on the streets, and it was part of the Built for Zero Initiative, where we're learning who's on the streets and what their issues were, and how to get them off the streets. We operated the emergency overflow shelter. At this time, when it first opened, there wasn't any agencies that were able to, to operate the shelter, so Karma Box stepped up, and we were able to house fifty-two folks a night for the extent of the, the shelter being open. Of course, the Safe Camp pilot program, and we operate the Safe Camp currently. The whole, this, just like the CARES Campus, we are a low-barrier housing folk-focused program. So we start with shelter, bed, mill, and work our way up to, to permanent housing. Having said low barrier, it's, we're the, we're, the CARES Campus is the only low-barrier shelter in the community. There are other shelters, but they're higher barrier, which means they're criteria to get in. A lot of the folks on the street don't, don't meet. So we take the portion of the population that wouldn't qualify to go into other shelters. If you look, the picture on the right there is when we first scouted out the land where the Safe Camp was going to be. It was at the Governor's Bowl. You can see the bleachers in the back there. And the picture on the left, about two months later, we worked really quick, was, that was our, we, we were ready, had our staff trained and ready to go, and we started moving people into tents. We had them all lined up across the street, or down that street, which was the end-of-line drive. When we looked into opening a Safe Camp, we wanted to, to open the best model, so we didn't just open a Safe Camp. We, we did homework. We did, visited other Safe Camps around the country. We wanted to look at what a successful exit would look like. And for us, that's in a permanent housing. Timeframes. We identified that timeframes, putting a timeframe on something isn't really successful because people grow at different rates. So what we did is we make it, we made it performance-based. So as people are, we call it the aggregation of marginal gains. As long as we're making improvements, folks can stay. We looked at culture. There is cultural adjustment when it comes to working with the homeless population. In this case, it would be a, a cultural adjustment from the streets to the camp, and then a cultural adjustment from the camp to permanent housing. We looked at staffing. What's a good client-to-staff ratio? What is good staff training? We looked at community. You want to provide a community that's inclusive, welcoming, that gives people ownership of the community while at the same time nudging them out. So there's a, there's a fine line to walk, and we, and, and we have to walk it. We looked at a good neighbor policy. What does it look like when managing the streets outside of your shelter as far as trash and behavior? We looked at average stays. Average stays are difficult because there's no average people. And sustainability, not just about getting someone housed, but how do we keep them housed? Why a Safe Camp? Because number one, it was an alternative to a shelter, a congregate shelter, so we, and, and non-congregate shelter is an alternative to it. And getting folks housed from the street is, is difficult, right? If you want people to grow, it's important that you provide a sense of safety, that we provide security, a sense of security, and also community and with, with support. So we evolved from tents to modpods, and this is the village that we, we stay in now. And, and as you can, as you look, as we progress from the tents to the pods to the village, our behavioral incidences drop significantly. This is where we're at in, in regards to the, to the CARES Campus. It's, we provide these four things, the staffing, training, these are really what we focus on, staffing and training, safety, security, capacity, and partnerships with, with other agencies. These are the people we serve. I think when people, the regular, I think when folks think of homeless folks, we're thinking about the, the new-to-homeless, the people that just need a hand up and not a handout, the people that are in situational homeless, homelessness. And we do work with these folks, but these folks usually remedy their homelessness in about ninety days because of their ability to navigate a system, the wherewithal to be able to move through the process. The larger portion of who we work with are the chronically homeless, the long-term homeless, the severely mentally ill, folks that suffer from substance use disorder or other mental illnesses, co-occurring disorder, folks that have, that are developmentally disabled, seniors, we have a lot of seniors, and veterans, which overarc all of these subcategories. So we work with a wide base of people. Services that are provided. The county provide, now, now, keep in mind, this is low barrier, so we can offer these, but we can't make them mandatory. The, the county offers life skills courses, DBT, CBT, mindfulness-based stress reduction, well, we have wellness groups, anger management, and yoga, other agencies that come in, our Alcoholics Anonymous, landlord communication, and workforce development. It's cool that we offer these classes. What's cooler than offering, offering the classes is that people are showing up. We have a high volume of participation because we practice what we call assertive engagement, where we're constantly carrying the narrative to our population that it's a good idea to show up to these classes. Our program model, again, we're housing-focused. So what we want to do in the Safe Camp is create a system that's going to model the system that we want them to succeed in. So when it comes to being a good neighbor and understanding that you have to, you know, that maybe we turn our music down at a certain time, that we're living next to people, how people take care of their pods is going to be a direct reflection of how they take care of their apartment. We also, we help with resume writing, pre-employment skills, behavior modification, real-life application, and we have what we call a community development peer. That's where we hire someone that lives in the camp to clean up the camp, and this really works with, as a gateway to employment. Most folks that take this role succeed really well in the workforce area. We have a participant advisory board. We use this every week. On Friday, we get the camp together, and folks are able to have a voice, voice their grievances. We're able to help folks understand the whys of why we're here. We have to keep constant engagement with folks and allowing them to understand what our role is and what their role is. So disability, seventy-five percent of the people that we work with have either physical or mental disabilities. Now, in the age tier, the, the, the largest portion of the age group that we work with are from forty-five to sixty-four years old. And we all know that the streets will add years to your life, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty. So when folks come in, into the camp, it's not as easy as just get a job, right? There's a little more to it than that. It is possible, but it does take a lot of work. I just want to make that clear. We have, since we've opened, we've had sixty-five successful exits, which is sixty-five exits to permanent housing. And as far as recidivism, if you look at it, in the first six months of us being open, well, first of all, sixty-five people in a permanent housing is good. It's really good. And then we get to recidivism. Sixty percent of the people in the first six months ended up coming back. That's bad. However, if you look at the next six months, we dropped our recidivism rate by two-thirds. The reason we did that is because we identified, and we've learned quickly, we identified that we're not just in the sheltering business, we're in the people-growing business. So what do we got to do to shift, pivot, and adjust? Oh, jeez. Ah, didn't realize the time. So our staff, I just want to highlight our staff. Our staff, eighty percent of our staff is a, is lived experience, have come from these streets. Having said that, they're well-trained, and also having said that, they work with people. When you work with people, it's important that you love people. And so even though we train folks about self-care, a lot of the stuff that happens, we take home. Since January of 2023, the staff, not just at the Safe Camp, but at the shelter, reversed eighty-two overdoses. I want you to keep that in mind. If you've never had anybody die in your arms or almost die in your arms, you take this home. Our staff is also a check away from being a client, maybe two checks away from being a client. It's important that we support our staff and that we don't attack this staff. They should be applauded. And, and also, just every year, we have community partners that help us with Christmas. Our guests, fifty guests, make a Christmas list. We give it to Sandy Parkhurst, who engages the community to get these gifts for all these residents. We reach out to Ames Construction for a meal every Christmas, and the notables come out and sing Christmas tunes. In addition to that, on the busiest day of the year, Santa Claus comes every year to deliver the presents. So I just wanted to highlight our staff as well, and thank you guys for supporting the CARES Campus, where we have a place to be able to help these people grow to the next phase, which in turn helps the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure there are commission questions and comments. I'll start over here. Vice Chair Herman, no. Do you have anything, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you remind us how many modpods we currently have and what our capacity is to date?
Fifty. And we, we have a pod or two open just about every week. So we're exiting folks to housing that often, and sometimes that people exit to the streets. It's important to note that, and we all know, nobody's ever had to engage in complex change without failing a little bit. And sometimes people come in, and they don't do well the first time, and they don't do well the second time, but the third time, they knock it out of the park, and we have to hold space for people to make mistakes, just like all of us do.
A quick follow-up, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the photo of the grassy area and the trees, and it looks wonderful, and if anybody's seen it in person, it's a vast improvement from what it was. Are you happy with the configuration of the modpods, and is there opportunity or space to add more in this current location, or is there another place on Safe Camp that we can consider expansion?
I'm biased. I will always say more. I think we have a very good product. We're outperforming most. I've yet to see one, so I'm going to say most other Safe Camps in the country. Been to eleven different cities and seen how their shelter operations work, seen how their Safe Camps work, and we're outperforming most of them. Maybe there's one out there that's doing great, so I don't want to say all of them. But, but yes, I believe there is, there is room there, or we could, somewhere else, but Safe Camps are historically and traditionally doing well based on how they've been adjusted.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any other commissioners have comments or questions? Commissioner Andrea.
I actually had a follow-up question to Commissioner Garcia. In terms of capacity, do you have a waiting list, or?
We don't have a
Sorry.
Okay. We don't have a waiting list. Waiting lists really don't, because the folks that we're taking are coming straight from the streets. So every two weeks, when a pod opens, we reach out, we have a, and this is one of my favorite things about the county that I haven't seen anywhere else, is they have a, a case conferencing of all the outreach providers that come together, and we go, we review our list of folks that we met on the streets and that we put into the HMI system, and we go over all of them, and we identify where folks are at. Are you gonna, you know, are you going to talk about everybody in that hour? No, but we're actively working No, but we're actively working on this list. And throughout the course, at the end of that meeting, we'll identify, I've, identify folks that would be good candidates for the safe camp. And so if there's no list, it's, are people actively working with outreach providers?
Um, maybe I shouldn't have used a waiting list. I, I just wanted to understand a little bit more of what you just said. So capacity is the topic. And so if the capacity is at 100% and somebody wants to come in, because you and I have had many conversations, hours and hours of conversation. And when someone is ready, and I think that that speaks to all kinds of situations, when somebody is ready for a change, you want to be able to provide that opportunity and connect them with the resources. And so that's what I was trying to understand. If you have 100% capacity, then no one can come in. And so do you run into that situation?
Yes.
And so I thought that. So what would be, I, I don't know if you have a number, I'm just curious. Right now, you have 50. And to Commissioner Garcia's point about is there a possibility of expansion? Um, you know, what does that look like? Because you do have obviously folks who are moving to other opportunities. And so there is, I'm sure, a revolving, uh, capacity situation. But if, if there is 100% capacity and someone needs help, you know, I'm, I'm really speaking to that question.
Um, I, I think, are you, are you asking if we could benefit from more pods? Absolutely. The size, though, is important because, uh, 50 is a good number. It's a, it's one of the, uh, best practices as far as people in the camp have to know each other. Our staff has to know our folks, we have to have a good client-to-staff ratio. If the ratio is off, your staff turn into the no people, which means they're not building rapport, they're not able to influence folks to do things. So they're not, we don't engage in a, in a good way when you have a low client-to-staff ratio. It's also more efficient, uh, budget-wise, as far as how your staffing's going to go, right? So 50 is a good number to stay safe with the, uh, with the, with the population, but it's also the most cost-effective way when it comes to, um, when it comes to your, your staffing.
Thanks.
Does that make sense?
Thanks.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just kind of follow up on that, that question. You've got 50 pods there now, and if you had 52 people that needed to be in your, your care, you could switch the other two people over to the CARES campus, the main CARES campus. So, so there is some, you couldn't.
No.
So you only, if somebody's homeless and, and you're full, my question is, if you're full and there's a homeless person that wants to be helped, we could put them in the main CARES campus.
Hmm.
That, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So that, that gives us some flexibility on capacity.
Yep.
Is the, is, is where I was trying to go with that. So, so thank you for that. So, um, I, uh, I'm the one who asked for you to be here, and I'm glad you're here. And, uh, it started off in our February 20th meeting. I, I saw, uh, a news clip on Channel 2, both the night of 2/19, the 11 o'clock news, and then I saw it again early in the morning, probably like 5, 5:30, something like that. And then when it was on later in the day, it, it was a different version of that, that same, uh, that same interview. So I, I know somebody who works, a friend of a friend, works at the TV station, so I have the long and the short version of that. So, um, and, but the long version, you said something, and I'm not quoting you verbatim, but something about a lot of folks are reluctant to go to the CARES campus for, for whatever reason. And that's no fault of yours, I, I get that. I'm just, everybody that I've talked to who's done ride-alongs, talked to the folks on the street, myself, when I talk to the folks on the street, there's a, some reluctance to go to the CARES campus. And, and I won't try and get to the bottom of that. I mean, we spend lots of money, we build a, a nice facility there. Uh, and if folks don't want to go there, how do we, because of all kinds of reasons? People say safety, people say whatever, they don't want to play by the rules. Whatever it might be, even though it's a low barrier or no barrier, um, they're still uncomfortable with any type of, of structure or rules or following the rules. And that's, that's America, they can do what they want to do. But if we build this facility and folks are reluctant to go there, I, I'm, I'd like to find out why people are, are not willing to go there and find out if we can address those issues so more folks are willing to use the facilities, more folks are willing to use the resources. So that's where I'm coming from. It's not picking on that. It's, if people don't want to go there, let's do a find-out why. And, and maybe since you are, you know, the subject matter expert here, you're, you're in there all the time, you, you live and breathe this. What do you think, just, you know, your personal feelings, why folks don't want to go there? Because there's still several hundred folks that are camping out other places in the county, and it's, it's moving around, it's, it's, the folks are moving everywhere. I hear, I've got people out in Washoe Valley living in sagebrush without even a tent. I mean, these people are really daredevils as far as I'm concerned. Living in the winter all, all, all along with just the clothes on your back. And if they don't want to come in and get a hot meal and a roof over their head, what can we do? And why do you think people don't want to go?
Well, so there's a, there's a few different answers, uh, there. But if you unpack it, you look at, like, you got 400 people, say 400, just estimating, 400 people living on the streets, you're going to have 400 different reasons. For me personally, if someone were to, and what I said in the interview is that we have a homeless service system that moves at the rate of willingness. So as people are willing to come off the street, there are beds opening several times a day, several beds opening several times a day. So folks can come in when they want, when they're willing to change. Then you get to look at willingness, right? I, uh, I believe that the campus is a place for people to go to improve their lives. And some people won't go there. Why is that? I also believe that in some cases, church will help people improve their lives. And people don't go to church. And that's a nice place, I've been there, I've been to a couple of them. Um, so I think it just comes down to the individual. In other places, this isn't just a Reno or Washoe County gig. In other places, when you look at the folks, it just depends on people's adjustment. And like when I was homeless, uh, it wasn't that bad. I just adjusted to that lifestyle and I, and I came off when there was, uh, when I, I came off the street when there was a, uh, a catalyst. And people's different catalyst, people's catalysts are different. So, but the language that other places use when it comes to street outreach or when it comes to enforcement, which is also important, you, uh, it's, it has to be more uncomfortable on the streets than it is in the shelter. And then there's a supply and demand thing, right? Because if all 400 people right now said, "We want to get off the streets," we'd be kind of screwed, yeah? So then what? So then we have to look at their willingness. We have that, we, we have a system that works at the rate of their willingness. So if there's a demand, there should be a supply. And right now, we don't have that demand because of various different levels of willingness. And how do you do that? Well, that's, what is it? Uh, legal paternalism? You somehow nudge people in a direction? I'm not sure, but I think it comes down to the individual.
So a couple of follow-up questions and comments. Uh, if there's 400 people and they have 400 different reasons, I'm trying to distill it down into some categories that, you know, they're not, I don't think there's 400, there's 400 different people and 400 different personalities, but there's got to be a couple of categories of folks. They don't like to do this, or they feel unsafe, or whatever their reason is. And so I was trying to get to those problems to see what the county could do to help folks get over their reluctance to enter the, the CARES campus.
I understand the question, and I think that what it is, it has a lot to do with messaging. We have folks on the streets right now that, um, that have, if you ask them, you're like, "Hey man, why won't you go to the shelter? What's, 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 what's the problem with going to the shelter?" A lot of them will say, "Man, I had a bad experience, it was terrible." And then you say, "Well, when did you have that experience?" And they'll say, "14 years ago or 12 years ago." And you also have to know that the camp, or the camp, well, the camp and the, the campus, the shelter, um, has evolved in three years. Every month, we're making improvements on how we deal with our folks. We are not in a situational homeless, homelessness time anymore, right? That's a small portion of the population. We, you know, an emergency shelter, which is what we're classified as, is where somebody finds themselves homeless, goes to the shelter, they're just there for rest, respite, recovery and re-entry. And they kind of do it by themselves. But we're not there anymore. We're at a behavioral homelessness situation where there's mental illness, there's drug addiction. So we have to, we're having to evolve our shelter around these issues. And do people have bad experiences at the shelter? Sure. It's, it's not, it's, it's, um, it's a homeless shelter, right? Um, but the idea is that there's less bad experiences at the shelter than there is on the streets. I can promise that.
Again, uh, I, I thank you, and I don't, I don't expect you to want to, to be the spokesman for the CARES campus, I'll put you on the spot for that because you're running the safe camp.
Yeah.
But, but you're also around this more than probably anybody in this room is, is around this. So, just trying to get some of your insight about why, and that's a concern of mine, is folks are reluctant. If they had a bad experience before, how can we get the message out that, uh, that was then and this is now, and maybe try it again? Some, something like that is what I'm, that's where I'm, I'm going for.
I mean, maybe when the headlines don't talk about how terrible the campus is. Maybe when we don't just focus on the negative things. Is there going to be some salt in the soup? Absolutely. Right, there's going to be some, I don't know if we looked at the, the portion of the population that we work with. Some of the people are severely mentally ill, and some folks just are, are going through a, a lot. And like, you're just, you're, we're, and we take these folks and we, we're trying to sort them out. Uh, shelters are turning into more of, uh, triage centers than emergency shelters. And it takes a bit to triage folks. So I, um, I think it, it comes down to messaging. If you have more negative messaging than you do positive messaging, well, we did that.
So what I'm hearing is maybe one size doesn't fit all. We've got a CARES campus and we're putting everybody in there. Maybe it should be, uh, some, some studying done to find out if somebody needs to be, uh, in, in their own population. People who, you know, somebody who's just needing a job or, and wants to find housing, and, and somebody else who's, who's got severe mental illness that they're never going to get right.
Yeah.
So putting them all together might be almost a detriment to some of the folks that are fringe, that could, could get out of the, get out of that cycle. So just, just an observation. The other thing that I, that I talked about, uh, before at one of these last several meetings was, uh, people living in their cars. And I, I got a message back from the, the chair about, uh, at the CARES campus. And it wasn't the CARES camp I was talking about. I'm talking about the, the county parking lot. And I'm talking, you know, just generalities about, uh, some homeless folks that are close to, but they're not on the street, they've still got a car, they've still got insurance, they've still got a job, but they're not housed. If we could use the county's parking lot here, and this has nothing to do with you, I'm just getting this out in the conversation, that, uh, there's other communities in Mac, uh, Mac, Rossi brought it up earlier, certain places in the, in the United States where the county has a safe parking lot where people could sleep in their cars. And, and I thought the biggest parking lot I can think of that the county has is probably right behind this facility, uh, by the rodeo ground. So that's what I was, was trying to get into the conversation earlier. But it's just something to think about for overflow folks that are not truly homeless yet. They're still working, they're, they're just looking, looking for a safe place to sleep in their car that isn't in a park or isn't on somebody's property and, and, and not have to worry about the, being arrested for sleeping in their car.
Yeah.
Just, just something else to bring into the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I am so impressed with the work you have done for our region, for our county, how you represented us nationally. Thank you so much, Mr. Denton. I have to admit, I was a, a big doubter of the Safe Camp program. I was super concerned about it turning into some safe camps that you've mentioned across the nation that have not been successful. But the moment you got you and your team and the Washoe County team on the ground in that campus in 2021, you were housing people immediately. And I know some of the folks, um, who you were housing and working with, who were living in those tents originally before we bought the mod pods, and, uh, you changed people's lives. And I just want to say thank you to you, to your staff. This is really tough work. It's thankless work, and like you were saying, there's a lot of naysayers. And you're right, nothing is perfect, everything is compromised. But I think the county and the city of Sparks and the city of Reno and the state of Nevada is our partner, we've come together and we've created a really good compromise to support our most vulnerable people. And thank you for being part of the solution, I really appreciate it. It was great to hear from you, and I think you really educated a lot of people about how this works. It's a complex situation. So I really appreciate your passion for it, and we're lucky to have you in Washoe County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more comment before you leave. Um, I was at the, uh, screening of the documentary. I wanted to commend you, and I see some familiar faces in the crowd. I was hoping that you could, um, give them a shout-out if you could before you leave and tell us who's here to support you today.
Oh, this squad right here? And so these, uh, this, this crew right here is from, uh, God, I'm drawing a blank, give me.
Crossroads?
Crossroads! Listen, there's crossroads all over Nevada, they actually have one in Vegas, it's great. Um, and again, there's been a, there's been an evolution of how we deal with our folks, and especially Jim. Man, your, your program has turned into whoever's running it. And Frankie Lemus has turned this place, I work with him every Sunday. We take him to the gym and the grip program, and we box, and then we go out and we volunteer, and we do a little bit of wellness stuff. And just watching these guys grow, the, the, the value of this is that a large percentage of the folks that are in this program, um, I knew from the streets, from working in the streets with them and watching, you know, when you're in this business, you have a unique opportunity to watch a human deteriorate. But every once in a while, you'll get programs like this that grow people, and you can see these dudes get their, get their glow back. It's good stuff.
So Safe Camp, Crossroads, CARE Camp, CARES Campus, all of that was highlighted in the documentary. Thanks to those of you in the crowd who participated, thanks to our commissioned support staff. Messaging is very critical. And oftentimes, the messaging and narrative gets taken over by individuals that have very strong opinions, and that trickles down to our staff, and it causes burnout, and it causes this anxiety. And I really want to commend you and your staff for taking care of yourselves. We, you said yourself, we're in the people-growing business. But in order to have people with lived experiences doing the work, we need, we also need to be supportive, and that counts as us sitting here at the DIAS.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Well, I'm sure we'll be talking to you soon.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just, uh, for time, yeah, let's applaud him and his team. What an inspiring way to start the meeting. All right, we are at 12:06. Um, I'd like to take just a 10-minute break so, uh, commissioners can use the restroom. Okay, this is what we're going to try to do before lunch. We'd like, I'd like to get the budget done, I'd like to get our proclamations done before lunch, our donations, um, and our consent items, and, I mean, if I dare, our block vote, and then take a lunch. So, uh, we will be back at, uh, 12:17. Thank you very much.
Washto County is one of the seventeen county governments that make Nevada great, taking advantage of the closeness of its constituents to make positive changes and lead our communities into the future, prioritizing digital equity, accessibility, and inclusion for all. And whereas Washto County is a proud member of the Nevada Association of Counties, which encourages county government to provide services that will maximize efficiency and foster public trust in county government. Now therefore, the Washto County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as National County Government Month.
Wonderful.
Congratulations to these folks.
Yes, Joe or Guillermo or Marie, do you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're gonna run down, take a picture with y'all and embarrass you online. And thank you. And I'll take the votes together, so we won't take that vote quite yet. We will now move into eight A two, Ms. Thomas.
Eight A two is proclaiming the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And here to accept this proclamation, we have members of the Washto County Sheriff's Office executive staff, and I think Jen Felter, Jennifer Felter is here as well, so we've got our dispatchers, too.
Wonderful, and Commissioner Clark is here to present the proclamation.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Are we all ready? Very well. Board of County Commissioners proclamation, whereas behind every emergency response that takes place in Washto County, there's a team of dedicated professional communication specialists who are often the first and the most vital link between our citizens and emergency services. And whereas the Washto County communications specialists are the lifeblood of information for more than five hundred public safety personnel, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, providing a critical safety service to the Washto County Sheriff's Office, Reno Sparks Indian Colony Police Department, Pyramid Lake Tribal Police, Pyramid Lake Fire Rescue EMS, United States Department of Veterans Affairs Police, the Washto County Department of Alternative Sentencing and Backup Services for REMZA, Health and Afterhour Services for Washto County School District Police Department, and whereas the twenty-four communication specialists, one communication call taker, five supervisors, and one center manager who serve at the Washto County Sheriff's Department Dispatch Center have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the more than one hundred and fifty thousand calls of service each year, covering an area of approximately sixty-seven, six hundred, six thousand seven hundred square miles with over one hundred and fourteen thousand residences. And whereas every Washto County communications specialist is certified by the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch, In-Emergency, Medical Dispatch, Emergency Police Dispatch, Emergency Fire Dispatch, and the EDQ Qual, so that they may provide substantial contributions to the treatment of medical patients, apprehension of criminals, and the suppression of fires throughout Washto County. And whereas we honor our county's less visible but vitally important first responders, the dedicated and professional communication specialists who are always ready to serve in the interest of public safety, no matter how difficult or how stressful the circumstances. Now therefore, the Washto County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim this week of April fourteenth to the twentieth, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do y'all have anything to say? Anything to add? Please.
I just want to thank my whole staff. They are amazing. Year in, all the, every day, every day they do this. They're amazing. They come to work with no qualms, they don't know what they're gonna do when they answer that phone, and they do an amazing job, so kudos to you guys.
Another very difficult job that you do to keep our community safe. So we'll do a quick picture with you, and thank you for your patience.
They're quiet on this side.
Just pretend you're talking to her.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on items eight A one or eight A two?
We do not.
Okay, I'd like to hear a motion to take those two items together, please.
So moved.
Okay, so I will take Commissioner Garcia's the motion, and Commissioner Andriola's the second. Any questions on the motion on item eight? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now move into donations, and I will throw it over to Commissioner Garcia.
Okay, we've got two items for donations. Annual donations from Fire Shows West have come in to support the Citizen Core Program for the past ten years, which is wonderful. And special thanks to this Girl Scout Troop Number Three Seventy-Six, and a local woodworking club called the Nevada Woodchucks for building a beautiful donation drop box for animal services, as well as all of the other monetary and food donations that came in for the care of our animals here regionally. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, looking for a second? Thank you, is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's none.
Okay, with a motion and a second, any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that motion also passes unanimously. Okay, we're now moving into consent, and from Vice Chair Herman, the only change that I heard was on ten E two, we will pull off Circle of Life Hospice on that particular item. I looked at the DA, do you want us to pull that item out entirely, or just make a note with the motion?
Just make a note in the motion.
Okay, great. Any other commissioners have questions or want to pull an item in consent?
I'd like to pull an item.
Okay, what item would you like to pull?
Ten F one.
For questions, or do you want to entirely pull the item for discussion?
Discussion.
Okay. And then Commissioner Garcia, I see that you are assigned in.
I just want to make a quick disclosure on ten E one, so do I need to pull it, or just go ahead and make?
You can do your disclosure now, thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, last year on May sixteenth, 2023, our board approved a District Three Special Fund dispersment for $10,000 that served five hundred and thirteen students from three different schools in Sun Valley. Prior to the vote, I disclosed then that I had served on the Sierra Nevada Journeys Board from 2019, 2022. It's been a while, but I just, in full transparency, wanted to make that disclosure today before we vote on ten E one.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. So I am looking for a motion to approve consent minus ten F one, and with a removal of the Circle of Life Hospice on ten E two.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And Madam Clerk, it looks like we have a little bit of public comment.
We do. We have Norma Tylock, followed by Kenneth Smiley.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Norma Tylock. I was just here to give kudos to our group in Cold Springs at Family Center. They do a fantastic job. I just love going there. We get so many fun things, and with a grant, that would help us. There's a lot of things that we don't have, like paper goods, toilet paper, cleaning goods that, you know, we could get. But the staff is wonderful. If you try to pick up something that you can't pick up, they'll run over you trying to help you. So this is most appreciated, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kenneth Smiley, followed by Penny Brock.
For the record, my name is Kenneth Smiley, and I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to discuss and express our gratitude for the agenda item ten E two, specifically regarding Commissioner Herman's district's special fund dispersment recommendation for men's crossroads in the amount of $7,500. This contribution is not just a monetary donation, it represents a beacon of hope and support for every individual who walks through our doors seeking a new pathway away from substance use and towards recovery. Men's Crossroads is more than just a program. It is a community built on the foundation of recovery, resilience, and reintegration. Our primary mission is to provide a supportive environment where men battling substance use disorders can achieve not only sobriety, but also a comprehensive, sustainable lifestyle change that addresses the root causes of addiction. Commissioner Herman's support through this fund dispersment is crucial in multiple facets of our operations and directly impacts the lives of the individuals we serve. The significance of this funding cannot be overstated. It directly contributes to our core services, which include residential care, therapeutic interventions, educational workshops, and after-care planning. Each component is essential for the recovery journey, and the additional funds will help us enhance these services to meet the increasing demands of our community. And as someone who was blessed enough to actually experience homelessness, and then the CARES Campus, which definitely has its naysayers, but their staff is gifted, they're special. They are able to see the people who want a change, that are willing to put up with whatever the naysayers and people that just want to bash something for their own personal gain of being, too intimidated to make the change. For those of us that actually want to, they have an amazing staff of mental health directors that saw the change in me, so I didn't have to stay there for six months, eight months. I was there two weeks, and from there he let me go to Men's Crossroads, where so many opportunities were given. But the special thing that I feel about the Men's Crossroads is, they obviously will give you the monetary things to get where you want to go, but it's more than that. It's the why are we using? Why do I think like this? How can I better myself? And they have staff that have passion, and they have time. And so if you're someone like me, though, it's like, I don't want just to be monetarily okay. I want a completely different mindset. I don't want to have any I-don't-know answers about why I did something. I want to be better, and then when I go out into the community, I want to be able to reach the people that literally thought like me, this is the best my life can get, digging in trash cans and asking for handouts. But being blessed with crossroads, I was able to ask many questions and deal with my emotional trauma, grief, sadness, and anger. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Wow, what a beautiful testimony. And I love your name. It's a great name. Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Jesse Escalante Encinas.
Penny Brock, for the record, I'd like to address ten point F point one.
I'm glad, Ms. Brock, we will be bringing that up as a separate item, so you can come up during that item.
Okay.
We're not voting on that right now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jesse Escalante Encinas.
Good afternoon. I'm a product of the streets, and I would like to give grace to the CARES Campus, Safe Campus, and Cartman's Crossroads Program. If it wasn't for programs like such, I would still be out there making mistakes. And if it wasn't for the men and people and staff there, I would not be a better person today because of them. So we thank you for the money you've donated to us, and I hope that we can keep working together.
Thank you. Wonderful. Okay.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion by Commissioner Andriola, and a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the motion? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And I think that passes unanimously as well. And so we will, yep, we will now move to ten F one. And let's see. I will toss it over to Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item ten F one, recommendation to approve payment of $752.56 per day retroactive to July first, 2023, to Reno Justice Court, judges who preside over pre-trial detention hearings on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, and to authorize human resources and budget to make corresponding changes and all adjustments. I'm looking at what the judges make, I'm looking at the dollar amount that's involved with this, and I think that the judges should be able to, in my opinion, the judges should be able to have comp time if they have to work this, and work their schedules around where they get maybe more days off at other times of the year versus just a payment of this. I just don't think it's right. I know that other departments, again, I brought up the Assessors' Office earlier, I know the folks there shift their time around and have comp time off and share time off, and I think they do the same thing at the Clerk's Office, where they sometimes have to work on weekends and they might get other times off. So I'm looking to the judges with the tightened economy that we have. I keep hearing about through different meetings here that the judges help us through the tough economic times and to take comp time versus payments for working on these days. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have comments on this item? I'm not seeing any, and it looks like we do have public comment, Madam Clerk.
Penny Brock, please.
Penny Brock, for the record, this is an elected office. We, as the voters, didn't know that we would be paying overtime or whatever you're calling it. If we do it for one elected office, will we have to do it for all elected offices? Will we have to do it for other employees under contract? So I don't think that the taxpayers and the voters would be in favor of this if you took it out to a vote by the taxpayers, the voters. I don't know that they'd be in favor of this. So I think that Commissioner Clark has a better idea if the others, like the clerk and probably all of our other elected officers, are taking comp time. So I don't know why the, you know, I'm grateful for our judges, but I don't know why they should get overtime when other elected officers don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Okay. With that, I am looking for a motion from the board on this item. Yes, Commissioner Andriola.
Is it okay if we ask a question?
Of course, yeah.
Legally, I'd like to ask the Assistant DA, Mr. Edwards, legally, how does that work, or maybe an HR professional? Is this a unique circumstance where you have an elected position that actually has an overtime component? And just the classification, the second part for clarification purposes, is just, is it a classification that allows and affords that from a HR perspective?
Yep, I think HR would be a better target for that question. I can tell you that it's something that's allowed if you approve it, and it's also allowed if you don't approve it. I will say that Commissioner Clark's idea today is one that all of you could consider, but it's not, if you vote on this item today, you can vote to either approve it or not approve it. You could also table it and bring it back to get more information on those kind of questions.
So, and I apologize, just really quick, these justices are required by AB four twenty-four to go into the office on the weekends, forty-eight hours of arrest, and so for me, I feel like it was mandated by the state. We're asking for them to do more than what they were originally elected to do. I am comfortable with moving forward with this. It is not a huge financial burden for the county, and it also helps with justice and ensuring, ensuring that we ensure that the proper justice is carried out. But Commissioner Andriola, go ahead.
I do understand that it is a statutory requirement, and that, you know, welcome to the legislature with unfunded mandates.
Yep, yep.
For anyone who has experienced twenty years at the legislature, unfunded mandates. So I was really trying to get to the core of the HR policy, because certainly if the legislature puts in statutory language, obviously, whatever that is, has to be complied with, but I was just curious if it had been, you know, there's always a balance when you have these type of legal requirements, and I didn't know if there was something that conflicted with HR policy and if that had been vetted. So that's where I was going with my HR question on the legality of it.
And Assistant County Manager Thomas, do you have any thoughts on this? Because I don't see anyone in HR in the audience.
I know that HR doesn't have a policy that conflicts with this. Courts are separate, so they can choose to do their HR policies in a way that they wish. I don't know that they confirmed with HR on this. However, it sounds like they did. However, there, you know, this again is a policy matter for the board to consider.
So I think it's a question of if folks are comfortable, you know, telling judges that they must take comp time. I'm not. But...
I'm signed in again.
Well, I'm sorry?
I'm signed in again.
Oh, Commissioner Clark, go ahead.
So again, my thoughts are, if we're not, we can't force anyone to take comp time, I understand that, but many other professions work on weekends, and they have an on-call. Somebody's on-call. It rotates through the judges, and have somebody on-call on the weekend. So there's ways of work around this that have cost savings, and I just, as others have mentioned, Penny Brock being one, if the public had a vote on this, I think they would vote against this. So let's figure out another way to manage this problem, and manage it by comp time, volunteers, on-call. There's other ways to work with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to the other board members, Commissioner Andriola.
I just want to follow up. I think that there is this balance when you have statutory requirements, and this is one. And so I think although there might be opportunities to look at other situations, this is really being driven by statute. So it's from that perspective that I am going to comply by the requirements that we are required to adhere to. So I know that the clarification of, you know, we can vote against, or we can vote for, or even look at other opportunities, but to me, unless there was something that conflicted with an HR policy, given the fact that there was legislation passed, that, you know, this is dictating, so to speak, I'm going to comply by the law.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I am looking for a motion, Commissioner Garcia, and I will second that. Any questions on the motion? Seeing, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And the motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. I know we still have the budget, but it would be great if we could just do the block so folks know where they're at after lunch, and then we could go the budget, and then we can take our lunch. So I'm looking to the Vice Chair to see, do you have a block vote for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. That would be item eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Thank you very much.
And that's a motion.
Oh, wonderful. And looking for a second on that? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, do you see any public comment on those items?
Nobody has signed in on any of those items.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Chair Herman, a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on that motion on block? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right, and I think that passes unanimously. Ah, it's on your screen. There you go. Okay, motion passes four to one. Okay, now we will move on to item seven, and Ms. Thomas, if you'll lead us into that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number seven is a recommendation to acknowledge a status report and possible direction to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2025 budget with estimated appropriations of approximately 1.1 billion, which incorporates board priorities of funding for existing contractual obligations, supplies, utilities, personnel costs, capital improvements, and operations, maintaining the county's assets and infrastructure needs, and operating budget requests, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commissioners with the certified tentative and final budget for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled on May twenty-first, 2024. I believe we have Manager Brown on line to lead us into this item.
Thank you. And Ms. Cook is also here in person. Mr. Manager, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and for the rest of the board this morning, or actually it's this afternoon, will be presenting the county manager's budget for fiscal year twenty-five. This budget reflects the strategic plan priorities established by this board, and this year's budget is probably one of the most challenging that I've seen in my tenure here because primarily of the continued flattening of C-Tax revenue to the county. It's growing, but it's growing at a declining rate, and since it's about a third of our revenue to the county, having a material impact on our ability to fund additional ongoing expenses going forward. So based on that...
to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2025 budget with estimated appropriations of approximately 1.1 billion, which incorporates board priorities of funding for existing contractual obligations, supplies, utilities, personnel costs, capital improvements and operations, maintaining the county's assets and infrastructure needs, and operating budget requests, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commissioners with the certified tentative and final budget for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled on May 21, 2024. I believe we have Manager Brown on line to lead us into this item.
Thank you. And Ms. Cook is also here in person. Mr. Manager, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and for the rest of the board this morning, well, actually it's this afternoon, we'll be presenting the county manager's budget for fiscal year 25. This budget reflects the strategic plan priorities established by this board, and this year's budget is probably one of the most challenging that I've seen in my tenure here because primarily of the continued flattening of C-Tax revenue to the county. It's growing, but it's growing at a declining rate, and since it's about a third of our revenue to the county, having a material impact on our ability to fund additional ongoing expenses going forward. So based on that, we see a need to hold on making additional headcount increases or ongoing expenses unless there's some offsetting revenue source to support them. You all are also aware that we are in the process of collective bargaining with our employees' associations. That process will have a material impact also on our expense picture going forward. So we just need to be very cautious with any expense growth to avoid a situation where over the five-year planning horizons, we experience expense growth that's higher than the revenue growth that we anticipate. We do hold to the principles of continuing to take care of the people we have, of sustaining the services we provide, and also making prudent use of reserves and one-time funding where appropriate. So with that, I will turn it over to Budget Manager Cook.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Excuse me. For the record, Lori Cook, Washoe County Budget Manager. That was the first item on our agenda. We will, some of these slides will just be pretty quick overviews, but wanted to make them available both for the board and the public as reference. So the strategic planning direction from October, information was heard loud and clear, was used for integral planning for this budget process. Back in February, we did have a mid-year, so it was the first six months of the fiscal year. This is through the first nine months of the fiscal year, unaudited through March 31st. We can see there are not, we're not seeing issues tracking, just like we saw in February. We are closer to budget, a little bit ahead of budget, so to speak, related to revenues because we were able to true those up in this year's budget, and also on expenditures at 75% of the year. Now, all expenditures don't follow a 12, a 12, a 12, but not seeing any concerns from that perspective of moving forward in the current year. This information also is very similar from what was presented in February. The, we're seeing taxable sales, which is, which are the taxable components of our C-Tax, our consolidated tax, up 2.1% through the January figures of last year, so last fiscal year, July, July through December was 2.9%, so we were up 2.9%. So you can see that flattening. The consolidated distributions are up 1.7% compared to 2% same period last year. Those two numbers do not directly correlate with each other because there are other components of the C-Tax, and we're seeing impacts related to real property transfer tax to the housing market. We have unemployment at 4.2%. The governor's certified population, which is what we use when we do the budget and submit it to the state at 508, almost 509,000, an increase of 1.42% from last year. There's some interesting information on here related to the housing market, on median sale price, average sale time. The last bullet I thought was very interesting, talking about cash buyers, and so obviously there are impacts related to federal monetary policy and how that impacts interest rates on houses, but in our market, we haven't necessarily seen this huge decline in asking So going into the budget, we focus again on the general fund. It's half of the county's budget, so take everything else and put it together, and the general fund itself is about half. However, expenditures growing faster than revenues is not just a phenomenon within the general fund. However, the base budget, if you remember back from February, we opened with a deficit, so that is the base budget process. Everything that was approved for last year, we roll forward into the future year, and we make any adjustments as we know what those, what that information is, whether it's collective bargaining, which we don't have those contracts yet, or other contractual items, you know, different people changing positions, whatever has happened. We also, there's some unqualified cost escalations, there's still some RFPs, one in particular that is very material, that we're waiting to have come back. And then, of course, sustainability. We do have ongoing fiscal year 2024. We have prior years as well, but 2024 was a big investment year for us. We, there was an approval of an additional 46 positions in the general fund, so that was quite hefty, I'll say, but necessary. The updated five-year forecast, so as of the updates, shows a 5.1% average revenue or source increase with 5.3% expenditure reuse. Looks pretty close, right? 0.2%, but when you're talking $500 million, that variance gets larger in the future. So where are these sources? Property tax is 52%. It has an increase of 8.2%, and those are multiple components. So there are the different caps related to the general cap or non-residential, the residential cap, and new development. We're looking at a C-Tax estimating or forecasting increase of 2%. Charges for services, about 7.6%. Licenses and permits, 2.1, and smaller revenue increases at 2.3. So you can see those, kind of run that 2 to 2.5 mark with the exception of property Appropriations. So appropriations are not just expenditures. Appropriations include transfers out, which in the general fund support other funds, as well as contingency. So these total appropriations are 522 million. We identified, or through the manager's recommendations, are identified, mental health obviously is a large component, or we're going down that route, so to speak. So for the West Hills facility, so back to Commissioner Hill's announcement of the renovations of the West Hills facility, we still need staff, at least at that facility level. So there are two positions being recommended, but they're both fully offset, so we found offsets and reallocations for those. So when we look at the burden to the five-year forecast, it's, you know, just normal personnel growth. Services for seniors, there are some contractual and different items that are in other funds, and then another position that, or an additional position to help, that's later in the presentation. And then competency court, funding based on, it was a somewhat, I think, pretty unprecedented. So we had district court, the district attorney, the, sorry, the second judicial district court, district attorney, public defender, alternate public defender, all worked together to come up with a plan and how to address this goal, this need related to the competency court. So that's where these are coming from. That is kind of the true enhancement if we want to talk about above-base or additional investments. So the appropriation type, when we're looking at the 522 million, on the right is by function. So how does, how does the general fund budget look to support different functions? On the left, we have personnel, services, supplies, transfers out, so that's part of that 522 million, is that $78 million of transfer out. And then other is, mostly it's contingency. So knowing that it was a kind of, call it a hold year, if you will, there are new positions being recommended. This is an outline of those positions related to competency court, public works infrastructure, so the West Hills. And then there's also two positions related to short-term rentals that are an outcome of the fee schedule and the, and the direction that the board gave related to short-term rentals. So this is kind of the technical wrapping up of those, which of course, that revenue, that was approved by the board for funding those positions. Sources and uses. So we can see, this is the sources, so this is the top of the sources and uses, if you will, and we can see that bottom line, that 5.4%, and you can see those, you know, larger areas of growth, or not as large areas of growth as it, as it is, coming up at that bottom line of that 500, almost 504 million. Sources, we have 522 million. So what we see here is a structural deficit, but we still have fund balance. So it's a balanced budget per state requirements, per state law. We are not allowed to have a deficit budget, which means we can't do T-bonds and, you know, print money, things like that, but we still have to have a balanced budget. I'd like to point out that a large portion of this, not all of it, is related to contingency. Because of those outliers, different things up to and including some collective, collective bargaining, we may not figure out what's going on. The contingency is, it's close to the statutory maximum, it's not quite. And again, anything that's not used or appropriated, the board has to approve use of contingency, will become savings or, you know, stay in fund balance. So that's kind of a, if we need it, we use it for contingency. And then the percentage that you see at the bottom for the tentative at 18.9% of unassigned fund balance, we do have restrictions of fund balance stabilization is one of those, which is now at $4 million. When we look at other funds, we also have to, right, look at, you know, strategic vision, strategic plan, also sustainability. So within public safety, there are, and again, these funds, the, really kind of the spoiler alert, is that the investments are within personnel. So not a lot of other, there's been a lot of reallocation, there's been a lot of scrubbing of numbers, there has been just a lot of work that my team and the departments and elected officials have gone through to get where we are. So animal services, based on service needs of two positions, an eligibility certification specialist in human services for senior services to support. Community services, this project manager for capital projects, we are in dire need of delivering capital projects. We have some very large, high-profile funded items that are related to ARPA or other funding that is expiring, that give us a different timeline, but we also need, we also have other projects that we need to still finish and do and start. So this will be funded through the capital fund, which is outside of the general fund. And then within utilities, there are additional positions. Again, these are offset, so there will be an item coming forward to the board, or no, yes, coming forward to the board related to, so this is rather than contractual, this is county employees. And I'm not going to, you know, speak too much about that because I'm not sure what I can do, like Nate getting mad at me, but this is basically a swap-out, so it's, it's a net zero, if you will.
The, the, I'm sorry.
The utility positions, yes.
And, and those are also funded by?
Oh, sorry, the utility fund is a proprietary fund that is funded by user fees as well as connection fees.
Yes.
And so that is non-general fund. Yeah, sorry about that. And again, to reiterate, we also needed to look at sustainability last year for 24, there were additional 26 positions. Also, whether it's the general fund or other funds, we have classification and compensation study implementation, PERS increase, which in recent memories, largest increase I've seen that I can remember, and as well as our OPEB increase. Those continue right into the future. So we don't have a PERS rate increase per se July 1, but we still have the increase from last year. So when we look at the other funds, other governmental funds, we see that they're different sources. There are some funds that receive ad valorem or property taxes, based on the property tax rate. Usually refer to it as pennies, cents, you know, three, one and a half, two, whatever it might happen to be, other revenues, and then transfers in. So these are those other funds that also have different funding sources and support different activities outside of the general fund. These are the uses, the next slide, which we have, some funds have transfers out. We can see that Indigent Tax Levy has transfers out. Those support child productive services goes over to the homelessness fund. And just as a reminder for the board, or maybe information, the homelessness fund is not just the CARES campus, it's not just SafeCamp, it's also Crossroads. It's funded through, the homelessness fund through transfers, as well as Our Place, Women's Programming. So there's, there's different areas, different programs, if you will, that are within that budget. Obviously, a large portion of that is the CARES campus, but it's, it's not the total, it's not the total budget, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, not very well. So, and on here, there's also within the capital facilities tax, there is a one-time recommendation of transfer to the roads fund. The roads fund is a fund that we're looking at, we're going to have to have conversations at some point related to sustainability. We're not unique and unusual that motor vehicle fuel tax is not keeping pace. We also have, well, I don't want to say it's unusual, but, right, but we also kind of have this split of we get some, this capital facilities tax, the majority of it goes back to the state general fund and the cities, so we keep some but not all, as well as motor vehicle fuel tax and the optional taxes, and then the agreement with Reno, RTC. So, you know, the amount that we pay in tax per gallon of gas, that doesn't come to Washoe County necessarily, a big portion of that goes to RTC, and their strategic plan, their initiatives and what they do and how they leverage that funding for both public transit and roads. Just some high-level highlights related to the capital improvement. The top box is the capital improvement fund. We basically have one large new project, and it's a project related to the parking lot up at 91 Par, the detention facility. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. There, we, there's a lot, I could talk, have Dave talk to you about this probably for a while, but there's a lot going on there. We want a earmark, or recommend you to earmark, funding for capital grants, so that way, if we get the, bless you, if we get the opportunity to apply for a particular grant for capital improvement, that we do have identified funds for that match, a lot of times we do need match. And then the Ninth Street data center upgrade, which is across the hall in the tech services, that's, it's pretty old. So there's some notable, there are obviously other projects in there, carry-forward projects. Some of it involves CARES campus, some of it involves other projects, there are ARPA-funded projects. Within parks, there's two new recommended projects, the Lays E5 Drainage, which might not sound exciting, but it is a parks project, as well as the South Valleys Regional Park Master Plan implementation. And then the one-time transfer to roads that I think I had already mentioned, and it's a by-time kind of, kind of situation there. For the proprietary funds, enterprise funds, again, operate like a business. The largest is the utilities fund, which we don't have water through there anymore with a divestiture to Tamwah, but stormwater sewer, I won't, Dwayne can let you know all of that information, building and safety, so building and permits, as well as golf. And then internal service funds, services kind of we provide to ourselves, if you will. So when we see health benefits, that's health benefits for covered employees, retirees, it's health benefits fund. Equipment services, which is basically our fleet, and risk management. So how does that all roll up to this big number that, you know, some people are okay with and some people aren't? Well, we have ongoing personnel investments, right? So we have prior year's positions, not just 24. We have PERS, OPEB, classification and compensation studies, we've had COLAs, there's all kinds of things that roll into how that accumulates on itself. There's an additional 25 or net 24 positions for all funds in here, reminding that few of those, I would say less than half of those are actually increases, the rest of them are funded with offsets or permanent offsets related to either revenue or reallocation of budget. Strategic priorities, mental health, infrastructure. We also have the legally required language access plan that we did, that HR worked pretty intensively, pretty hard per AB 266, and that was also funded through, through reallocation, so that's a net zero impact. So when we look at the increase in the general fund in particular, in the staff report, we can see the general fund appropriations year over year adopted to adopt is a 1% increase. That, although they're big numbers, that's pretty flat. The other funds, there's different, there's different various reasons why other funds have increases or decreases, but for the most part, just trying to figure out what we can do with what we already have and reallocate where we can, and then also work with departments to figure out if there's alternative service delivery methods or, you know, whatever other conversations we might need to continue to have moving forward. So the tentative budget was submitted, that has to happen on or before April 15. The public hearing for the tentative budget, sounds strange for timeline, right? You already turned it in. The state has to certify our tentative budget. We don't get that certification until later in the process. So statute refers to the public hearing for the tentative, but the board still adopts the final. That, that adoption or that public hearing for the tentative can't happen any earlier than the third Monday in May, so depending on where that Monday falls in May, and May 31st, because we have to submit an adopted final budget by June 1st. So we have a kind of scrunched timeline when it comes to the final, getting that, coming to the board, getting that approved, and then submitting that. We also have the five-year capital improvement plan, debt management policy, statement of indebtedness are both due for submission by August 1st, and those items also come to the board. Practice has been the five-year capital improvement plan follows the adoption of the final budget. And I'd say probably nine times out of the last 10 years, that's what has happened. So it's on the same day. It was lots of fun, and that's what I have.
Lots of fun, lots of hard work by you and your team, and all of the county staff who put in their requests and made some compromises, because we really needed to be conservative this year, not having some uncertainties in the world. So, thank you. I know that it's, it's a difficult job that you have, Ms. Cook, you and your team. We appreciate it. I see that Vice Chair Herman has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple questions. Thank you for being there. And I know you guys have worked really hard on this, and I don't know about, but I still have questions. As far as property tax income, shouldn't we have, I mean, shouldn't it have gone way up with all the new homes and the big buildings they've built and all that?
So, what?
They pay taxes.
Right, right. Well, not in all cases. There are abatements that are approved through the governor's office, in some cases, on both property tax and sales tax, if they're related to economic development or environmental, call it GOED. However, generally speaking, yes. What happens is it's a combination. So, we would normally expect, oh, I'm sorry, we would normally expect if assessed valuation equaled an increase in property tax, which is kind of the situation we were in pre-abatement, so pre-2006 implementation of 2006. So, residential properties regardless. So, not on this assessed valuation, but last year's, gosh, it was like a 31% increase in assessed value, in assessed valuation. Nobody's property tax went up 31%. So, depending on how you qualify, you're either a 3% or you're an 8%. So, an 8% is the general cap, the 3% is the residential cap. We have had years where we're below the cap, because it's a statutory formula, it's two times CPI, or the 10-year rolling average of assessed valuation change. And that's what we saw over the recession, we actually saw property taxes go down. And it took us until fiscal year 19 to get back to fiscal year 08 in absolute value. New development is part of the reason that we see higher than 8%. If every single property in the county was at the, we'll call it the high cap, it could have been 8%, but it's not. So, new development definitely plays in there as far as adding to the, adding to the rolls. Part of the, I won't say concern, I don't want to speak for the development community, but based on the information and what we're using in forecasts, is the availability of land to be developed. You know, knowing that there's probably going to be some limitations to that, at least according to some of the different sources of what's available to develop. So, yes, it definitely does go on the rolls at 100%. If it's a new house and it's, whatever, the assessed valuation's a full percent, but it's not, it's blended, it's weighted in with the cap on all the other properties that also have increases.
Well, you know, when you split land, you put a whole lot more on certain piece of land.
Oh, for sure.
And I know my taxes have gone up. So, I'm going to, let me ask the question a little differently. In the last, say, 10 years, and this is just a, just throwing it out there at you, the percentage, okay, now, of property tax income is 52%?
Yeah.
And consolidated tax, 32. And, and what, has that percentage been similar to that every year?
No, the past few years where we've seen this growth, this pretty extreme growth in, in consolidated tax, we actually saw that as a larger percentage in, a larger percentage of the total revenue. What I've seen historically for C-tax is 28%-ish, but with this growth that we've seen, it's gone higher. I think, I don't want to misspeak, so if somebody knows that it's a different number, let me know. A couple of years ago, I believe property tax was about 49%, because we saw consolidated tax growing at a, at a higher rate. And consolidated tax, unlike total property taxes, consolidated tax is accounted for in the general fund. Property tax is allocated out based on the property tax rates. There's a general fund or unrestricted portion of that, and then there's the portions that go to the other restricted funds, some of that passes through to the state or various different areas. So, that's not necessarily normal. It's kind of the normal right now. It is, but we did see it go down from last year. I think last year was 33 and, I want to say 33 and 50, and then now we see it at 52 and 32.
So, growth hasn't benefited us that much, if we have to pay more taxes. You know, looking at it as a citizen pays property tax. Growth hasn't really, because that's what they're always telling us, if we get more growth, and we build more, and we get more people here paying taxes, that's the benefit of, for, you know, development and growth. But it looks like it worked in reverse.
I think there's an offset to the, there's always an offset, right, to the development. So, when you have development and you're doing things with property, there's responsibilities or impacts that go along with that. I don't know that new development can solely be attributed to people in the area having more taxable sales. I know that we did have a pretty strong increase over COVID, which none of us were expecting. We had a lot of drive-up market, so some of our neighbors that were closed, locked down. We had limits, but we were still open. I know June of 2020, our CVA indicated that was the best June they had ever had. So, while we had limitations, say, our next-door neighbor, you know, California, they, they were shut down. So, we did see an accelerated increase, but that, in my mind, is not all development-related or related to people moving, moving here. I don't know what the statistics are, but I know that there's still a fairly decent investment interest in, in properties in the area. So, whether it's pension funds or other large investment firms, rather than people owning property. So, I'm not going to disagree with your premise. Obviously, development in and of itself creates other impacts.
So, I, I will give the floor to someone else. I'm going to wear you out.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, what I think I heard Commissioner Herman, Vice Chair Herman, talking about is all the new development. And, and of course, that comes new to the rolls, so there's no depreciation on that. And the cap may be, if it's a warehouse or a apartment building, or anything other than a single-family home, that's on the high cap. So, and then I think what I heard Commissioner Herman say was that all of this extra growth hasn't, hasn't really benefited us, but, or words to that effect. And part of that problem is, when we have new, new money coming into the coffers, and we're spending it faster than it's coming in, I guess it doesn't really benefit us. It does, it keeps us floating, treading water a bit longer, but, at the end of the day, there's been a lot of new development here, and that comes on at full market value. So, that's, that's an area that, that should be of concern. And as I talked about earlier in the commissioner comments, the assessor's office is responsible for catching all of that development and making sure that it gets on the tax rolls. There's other, there's other things that the assessor's office does, in addition to capturing new development, is permits. Permits are coming aboard, and permits are something that they have to work into their schedule as time permits. So, I urge all commissioners to have an interview, meet with the assessor, and let him explain to you how adding a few new staff members to his department might actually increase the county's bottom line. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners before I open it up to public comment? Okay, Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Penny Brock, for the record. First of all, it was disappointing that this PowerPoint was not on the agenda, so that we, the public, the taxpayers, could look it over before today. Also, so US Commissioners could look it over, because what we were provided in the staff report lacked a lot of information. Last year, our budget was 1.6 billion. What happened at the first meeting like this one, it was lower. But then, when they came back for the approval in May, it had reached 1.6 billion. We see in the staff report that it looks like, I think it's a 5% increase. Yet, that doesn't reflect from 1.6 billion for this year. So, this, this is really confusing to us as taxpayers. I don't understand what's going on. There's a lot I could talk about, because of lack of time, I want to focus on the indigent fund, the homeless fund, and the seniors fund. Just like last year, the indigent slash homeless got about $45 million. It's going to be about the same this year. Why? No one can tell me what indigent means. I look it up, you know, in the dictionary, it says the poor. So, I guess that's the homeless, they're poor. So, I don't understand, you can't get any information about the indigent fund. So, that's a huge problem. So, I have, from a taxpayer's perspective, I have to think, well, that's all going to the homeless. You know, we've got like, just over 2,000 homeless. For them to even get $21.8 million for just over 2,000 population, that, that seems a little outrageous. But then you add in the 24.1 million, this does not make sense to me. Then, we look at the seniors, they're again going to get, just, this year it was just a little bit above 3 million. This is that, now it's going to be 3.4 million. Then, for capital expenditures, there's nothing in there to provide senior centers in South Reno, West Reno, or Northwest Reno. Again, that whole senior population of over 100,000 people is not being addressed. And yet, look at what they're asking for, for the homeless indigent population. This is wrong. Also, we're getting a property tax increase in July again. Now, there again, that is mandated by NRS, but you don't have to do it. In Houston, Texas, which has got like, I think, 20 million population, they get to vote on whether or not to raise their taxes. This, they're going to do it this year for the first time in 20 years. Our budget is...
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Pam Dar.
Valerie Fianaca, kind of took my thunder, and my math, it might be different than hers, though. I, I think ARPA made us fat and happy. ARPA and COVID funds. And I warned, I've been warning, ever since it came about, that when it all goes away, that we're going to cry. And I think it's coming up. I think it's, hasn't quite hit us yet, but it's, it's coming, and it's going to be really, really treacherous when it gets here. I, I noticed 45,539,000 and some odd dollars for the homeless, and seniors, I calculated 6,937,000. But I see sunlight in that, because at the rate we're going with the seniors, they can qualify as homeless pretty soon. So, they'll fit into that budget. Welfare, 25.1% of the budget, and public safety, 28.8% of the budget. That doesn't compute in my head. Public safety should far outweigh the welfare. And then I question, okay, when you're talking welfare and you're talking homeless, are you talking the immigrant population, the wealth, the newcomers, or the illegal immigrants, as I call them? I tried to get that information from 311, and they told me I had to contact DPA, the Department of Homeland Security. And I question, is that built into this budget? Because welfare should be healthcare for, I don't know, for people who can't afford it? Does that include healthcare for our seniors? Does that include healthcare for our homeless? Yeah, I'd like to see a breakdown here of what exactly that includes. And I agree with Penny, there should be more detail, and we should be able to see it sooner, and we should be able to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. Because I, I feel like, when you're talking welfare here, and you're talking seniors, and you're talking homeless, there's a whole bunch grouped there together that we have no clue what that means. No clue. Who are you including in all that? And I'd really like to know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Pam Dar?
Good afternoon, Pam Dar, Chair and Commissioners. I want to tell you a story. I went to a fundraiser dinner last week, and something was brought up, I met a new individual there, she was sitting by herself, so I introduced myself. We made small talk. I asked her what she did for a living, and she works in social services. She's getting close for retirement. She looked tired. I said, well, you must be busy with everybody, homeless, trying to get them into programs, find them housing. And she said, really, right now, I'm dealing with refugees. All our clients I'm seeing right now are refugees. And I looked at her, I said, we can't afford this, we're going broke. At this point, a friend joined me, and she said, no, Pam, we're already broke. We're bringing people in, in the tune of a couple hundred thousand a month, from like 190 other countries. We need to know, it shouldn't be a secret, how many people we're helping from other countries. I'm worried about my nephews, my nieces, I only have cats and a turtle, but I have a large family. Things are getting expensive. I went to get gas at Costco yesterday, turned around and saw the price and went, holy, it wasn't a bad word, but it was close. And everybody looked at me. But it took my breath away. I mean, I think gas went up like 50, 60 cents in just a week. So, my question to you, if you can't answer that question, because maybe it's intermingled with federal funds, maybe you can send letters to the federal government and let us know what to prepare for. I don't want this clouded, piven explosion. I don't want taxes going through the roof. I'm getting tired of going to get groceries, buying a bag full of groceries and having it be $100. I mean, we're going to pay for this through inflation, it looks like. And we need to be told the truth, what's happening? That was a shocker when she said all of her clients were refugees. I want to help you. My grandparents on both sides came here from Ireland, but they had to have sponsors. We can't give everything to everybody for free, without us going broke. I want a future for the kids, their kids. We're giving it away right in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else saying anything?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Bringing it back to the board, any other comments on this item? Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
Hello. Okay. So, I know we saw our presentation on February 20. We had, I had my briefing with you on April 1, and since then, we've had a lot of meetings about collective bargaining. This is my first year where I've looked at the budget process with that factor. And I know in the budget, or the agenda packet, it's, it's saying that this is an unknown impact, you know, the collective bargaining. Can you talk to me a little bit more about how this year looks different than last year?
So, sorry, for the record, Lori Cook, Budget Manager, when we have a collective bargaining agreement and changes, they have effective dates, so whether...
Can you put the microphone closer to you, Lori? Thank you.
I'm usually pretty loud. So, we know, going in, when we have multi-year agreements, or if we've already had agreements signed, what those are. So, we knew this past July 1, it was a 3.5% COLA. We can account for those in the simulation, or in the forecast and budget, and it rolls forward. And so, we reflect it in the budget. When we don't know, we don't know. And then there are, we have to work very closely with Human Resources and make sure that what we're doing abides by collective bargaining, and good faith bargaining, and all the statutory requirements. So, of course, there are estimates. We know that across the entire county, a 1% salary increase would be $3.9 million. For the general fund, it's 2.7, because obviously not all personnel is in the general fund. So, just from a perspective of impact, magnitude of impact, on the budget, if we had a 1% increase in property tax and a 1% increase in C-tax, that 2% would buy or fund a 1.5% salary increase. So, we have to go into it knowing that we don't know. What is this unknown? What is the board going to approve? And, so, it's, it's more challenging when we don't have them, but we have ways to be able to quantify and communicate that to the board and be able to, for HR, whomever had those discussions during labor.
Thank you. Any other board comments? I'm not seeing any. Oh, yes, Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned the deadline in terms of, you know, the statutory requirement for you to get the draft in, and then there's a process, the third Monday, May through May 31st. Is there a, a public workshop, or is there an opportunity for the public to actually understand some of this detail? Or has that ever been done? I'm just wondering how that would work?
As far as public workshops, I'm not aware. I know we've done citizen surveys, we've done other items. I'm going to say once upon a time, so pre-recession, there were special meetings that were set for, I believe they started in February, they're every Monday, and the Board would come, and then the departments would come and talk about, you know, their needs, and they would go over their programs and whatnot. And I believe as part of open meeting law, there was public comment or feedback as part of that process. So we've traditionally or historically had the public hearing. So we've had this, so we have like a kind of a opening up, this is what it's looking like. It'll start, you know, with strategic planning, in some cases, go to the early outlook, come to, to this, this portion, and then go to the required public-
So the required public hearing is actually at a commission meeting?
Yes. They could set a special meeting. So we try to schedule it or make sure that it's on something that's already scheduled so that we know, you know, as soon as possible that, you know, we have a quorum and those types of things.
May I have a follow-up, please? Obviously, the categories, when you have, you know, various groupings, you know, are a compilation of components. And otherwise, we'd probably be looking at, I don't know, what's your guess, 1,000 pages or something? A significant-
Correct.
But, but, but I'm guessing, it's just a speculation, my question is, is that you can expand what those components are that make up whatever that GL category is? Or how does that work? I guess where I'm going with this is that, is there an opportunity to post the detail of what these categories are made up of online so that people do have an opportunity to understand with some of the inquiries from the public? I'm just curious.
I don't know if it would be-
So like indigent, or welfare, or whatever that component is that would make up these various components within that listed category?
Yeah.
I don't know if that is something-
I don't know if it's something we can actually add to the agenda as an addendum, because I'm not sure. But I know that, I mean, I'm sure that we could find a way to get that information. So to your point, welfare, when we look at the welfare function for the county, includes things like child protective services. The indigent fund, which has other items associated with it, like nursing, nursing home match. I mean, there's some larger programs in there in the indigent fund, and then, you know, money that goes, I say goes back to the state, but that we pass through to the state. A welfare is also senior, is considered the welfare function, senior services as well as homelessness. So those are the four main components. But again, without having them broken out, it's kind of hard to see their magnitude. Off the top of my head, I would say child protective services is the largest of those, the largest budget.
And I don't want to breach any, you know, I don't want to have Assistant Nate Edwards cautioning that I'm entering into-
No, you're fine.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I think it would be helpful to actually have transparency in every single category that, that composes these. You know, I work with financials, not to the capacity you do, but when you have a condensed format for readability, it's, it's understandable because you all know the components. But I think for full transparency, looking at just what you gave in example, these are some of the components that make up what, what is categorized as welfare. And so then it would have the breakdown of what that is, and I don't know if it's something that can be readily, you know, available to the public for review.
It's all manual. I'll be completely honest with you.
It is all manual?
Yes. So when we, you know, when you see these, if you look at the, sorry, the presentation, and you look at like the other funds budget and it talks about the appropriations, we put those in the format that we have to for the state, so it rolls up those appropriations. So, right, we have salaries, benefits, service supplies, and capital. And then there's also appropriations of transfers out as applicable. In our system, each of those is, so those are rolled up, and they're rolled up into that fund. But we don't have a way, which is what we're working on with our budget system, but we don't have a way to say A, B, C, and D, or these funds, do a report and print it. We have to go into Excel, either copy and paste them or manually enter them. And then, so, right, there's that balance between, you know, every single of the thousands of GLs, which, you know, is possible. The problem with that is, well, that's the problem. Feedback and through experience, what that does is sometimes it's too much information. So it's, okay, well, what is this, or what is that, or why, you know, do you have, I mean, right, we have all things from equipment services to utilities to contractual to, I mean, there's a lot that's in there. The majority of our expenditures are personnel across the organization, about 80%.
But Ms. Cook-
But we could do it, it just would take, right, it's just a kind of a manual process. We can't go in, okay, get me that report and then expand it.
Isn't that our CAFR, though?
The ACFAR is a com, yeah, that's okay, that is a combination, but it's also segregated and separated by funds. So when we look at, or departments, so when we look, but yes, there's public safety function, and it has all the departments separated in it. Our state doc is what we call it, does the exact same thing. So it's the same format that we're required to, to, to have with that. So when it's rolled up here, when we say welfare, it's going to be multiple funds, right? So technically, within the welfare world, there's five. We have some in the general fund, 221, 223, 225, and 228. But we have those funds that are related to welfare. So I completely understand what you're saying, and I think it would be valuable. It's just we have to just give ourselves, I think, more time to be able to, to break that out.
So I just want to be a point of clarification. You mentioned that when you were going through that, that that's what you're moving towards. Is there a plan then to move towards that?
That was the, yes, that's the idea.
The budget, is it a new technology platform?
Yeah, it is. So it came to the Board last year, and it's called ANAPLAN, but we're working with TrueEd, which is a consultant for implementation. Right now, we're working on budget book pages, which in, in reality, in all actuality, in my opinion, the budget book is a much better document. I just think it has more description and it has, but again, it has those rolled up categories and doesn't necessarily roll them up by function the way that some of our other information does. But that's what we're working towards, is that we can do that within the tool and then be able to export it, Power BI, whatever we're doing with it to make it available.
And then we can possibly, not possibly, but then we can look at putting it publicly available with, you know, the 1,000 pages of, whatever many pages it is, you know?
Right, it wouldn't be, it's, because of the limitation of the space size, it can't, it's not going to export at the GL level. So it's not going to export at, this is a contract, this is a-
No, yeah.
Landscape contracted, but it could, but it can do it by, by categories, which for us are the four, the personnel, benefits.
What's the timeframe, possibly?
We are still working on Phase 2, which is the most, I would say the end of the month. We're looking at that for our budget book pages, and then we're going to, into reporting. But we're kind of working on them at the same time.
So-
And then making sure, right, we had to test and do data validation and make sure, if we were to do it, that-
Good old data validation.
We did some projects, or one of my staff in particular worked on some Power BI, and looked like it was going to be pretty successful, but we found, you know, it's like, well, this looks like it's doubled, or this, you know, so it's, it's the data going into it that we have to make sure that it's accurate, because-
But it doesn't look like it's going to make it for this cycle.
No, if, if we, if that's what we can do, if that's the direction, we'll just, we'll just take care of that manually, we'll just show a hierarchy, if you will, of manually of what, what that, what those different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
County Manager Eric Brown. I would just introduce him to the discussion. Whenever I talk to constituents or people in the community who want to more thoroughly understand the county's budget, I direct them through prior year budget book. It has a lot of detail that explains the, how the strategic plan initiatives are being funded. And it, 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 for the layman, I think, is a useful document for people to understand how the, how the county is spending the resources that we, this is a suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Sorry, I was thinking of that, and I called it the CAFR, which is really the AFR, so the budget book and-
But they're complementary.
And that's online, right? Yeah, we have our budget book online.
And we have historicals, so they go back quite a bit. So it's not just the current year. We have a library that is available as well, so you can look at audited actuals, you can look at the adopted budget. And I will make that comment as well. The adopted budget is the adopted budget. So I went and I made sure, and I double-checked last year's adopted budget total was 1.06 billion. That's the adopted budget from last year, so maybe there was transposition or something. But then we have adjusted budget. So there are carryforwards that are handled during the audit or when the ACFAR comes forward to the Board. There are mid-year changes. A lot of these funds, senior in particular is one of them, health district is another one, where they receive funding that we don't budget for, because we don't know if we're going to get it. We get a federal award, or we get a state award, and then we amend the budget. And so it increases it. So the adopted budget, and that's what's good, in my opinion, or what you can see in the budget book, is you can see the adopted or the adjusted plan and then the estimates. So budget book, or the budget lives and breathes. It can change throughout the year for a variety of reasons. So when we look at things, a lot of times, we'll compare an adopted to adopted, because that's more of an apples to apples.
Commissioner Clark.
Real quick, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, where, where would the public find that on the county's website? The budget book?
The budget book is on the county's website under the Finance Department. It would be under Budget Division, and there are different categories. So there's Cost Allocation Plan, Debt Management, Budget. I think there's something else that I can't remember, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, CIP. So, yeah, those are all available online. So the current year, and then if you go to the library, there's prior years.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I've got to tell you, I'm not sure which of these rabbit holes I want to go down today. But one of them is, we're, we're trying to prepare this budget, we're in contract negotiations with employees. One of the first things that I suggest that the county should do in the future is make these two items at different times of the year. Maybe in the future, we can negotiate a contract where it isn't right on the heels of the budget. So we had a good idea of what the budget's going to end up with and what the employee pay is going to be there. So when you have both of these coming up, and you said, part of this, and again, this is a rabbit hole that I'm going to go down first, is when we, we're not going to be exactly sure what the contract negotiations are, and yet we're trying to finalize a budget. How, how does that make sense? It's like, I, I just don't understand it. So that's something that maybe future commissioners might want to address through HR and, and have the contracts where they're not at the exact same time that we're trying to work on the budget, which is mandated by the state. We've got a state directive. I don't know if we have a state directive when, when we have to negotiate with our employee union. So something to think about that, and, you know, so many variables here. I just talked to, I met with a department head this morning about 9 o'clock, I think about 9:30 this morning, he got his email from, from your department or somewhere telling him what the budget, this budget information. So he had a little or no heads up on this before the, within an hour, where the, the county commissioners are going to vote on something that he's had his hands on for a few, just a few minutes. And then to Commissioner Andriola's comment about the public, I mean, the public doesn't get a heads up on this. Again, another rabbit hole to go down, as I understand it back, a few years back, before I was here, obviously, the department heads would come in and make a presentation to the commissioners about what their budgetary needs were. So we kind of, we're all working with this. Now it disappears that the manager's office through your office shows up at one meeting and says, let's, let's vote on it. I've talked about this in the past, and not only this issue, but other issues, is, you know, we cancel meetings, several meetings have been canceled, they could have been talking about this, and, and now it's hurry up and let's vote on it. So hardly get a chance to digest it, hardly get a chance to look at it, the public, and this is not the county's budget, this isn't the county's money, this is the taxpayers' budget, and this is the, and this is taxpayers' money. So they should have, again, back to what Commissioner Andriola said, the public needs some input in this in the future, and we need to figure out a different way to get community involvement in the budgetary process. So that's just, just my thoughts on what I'm hearing here today. Thank you.
Okay, any other Board members? I'm not seeing any. Thank you again to you and your team for all your work putting this together. And with that, we will now go on our lunch break. We will come back at 2, what? We don't need a motion, do we?
Yes, I think you do. I, I think you want to-
Accept?
Yeah, accept this as the tentative budget.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Garcia.
Madam Chair, I move to acknowledge a status report for fiscal plan 2025 budget as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes 3 to 2 with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark in the negative. Okay, we will now break for lunch. We will come back at 2, oh my gosh, what should we do? 2:20. Thank you very much.
Internal master plan, then in 2019, we've completed a master plan update. But as you know, things changed in the world, and so we had a chance to update it again. We have master plans for many of our facility group types, so this was the general government facilities. We also have court-related, we have parks master plans, our libraries, 911 par, our utility services, all have master plans as guiding documents for us. In 2019, again, we updated the master plan really with only four goals. A lot of those were to really identify cross-functional initiatives, ways for our departments to work together, internal to departments, opening up space to be more collegial than the way we work, providing more efficient workstations based on technology and the need to kind of push away from paper use and into computers. And then 2020 occurred, and we had this little thing that jumped into all of our lives. And out of that, we really understood that we needed to update our master plan again, and this time, we added an additional six goals based on the way we are now working and providing services to our community. So the reduction of our footprint in offices, the way we're working now is different than we did in 2019. And so we were able to work with our departments, work with our consultant, to really understand the amount of space necessary based on the way we're working. So if someone is in the office three days a week, working physically in a space, and then they're off-site, whether it's in another county facility or working at home, they don't need to have a full-time workstation within the facility. And so we took that into account to really understand what's best for Washoe County citizens because space has a price. Space is not cheap for us to have our own space or even lease space. So we looked at a lot of different opportunities that we have within this facility. One of the opportunities that's starting to bubble to the top is really where we meet our customer. So having primary locations where we meet our customer, whether that's one entrance in building D, one entrance in building B, one entrance in building A, those are areas where we can meet the customer, where their needs are met, and have freedom behind the scenes, so to speak, to be able to utilize our space in different ways, since we're all using laptops these days. We are utilizing technology to help meet with our customers. We also have the in-person meeting as well. Roughly 30% of our traffic that comes in the door is just simply asking for directions. So if we can focus where those people go, that will be really helpful. The other piece is the ability to train our employees, the ability for employees to have a space to be able to kind of call their own, which can, through this master plan update, excuse me, starts to take shape in building C. It starts to become more employee-centric. We've got a large area over there that was utilized for contact tracing. As that grant period comes to an end, we're re-envisioning what that really looks like. So again, you know, what we found through this process is that just here at Ninth Street, an increase of 10% of employee population is projected through 2034. It's the 10-year planning horizon. So as you look through budget requests and things like that, this is the information that was provided from the departments. Again, utilizing current underutilized space. We have at least, we could put at least 100 additional staff just by reutilizing the space we currently have as it's configured. And then incorporating these new space standards will actually get us what we need to be able to house employees within this facility by 2034, as well as some locations that are potentially in lease space now. So where we work matters. There are some important concepts for all facilities to understand. Again, operating and owning space has a real cost to taxpayers, to Washoe County as a whole. Remodel costs are easily 50% less expensive than building new. In our 2019 master plan, we projected the need for 30,000 square feet. In this master plan update, we're projecting that we have a space surplus of roughly 10,000 square feet. So that's just being smart about the way we utilize our space, shrinking down kind of the space that we utilize and allowing some of that hybrid work to really take effect. Again, more than 10% of the current workforce is currently underutilizing the space. So we have one space for every employee that's in this complex. We don't need to work that way. There are new ways to do business. There are different ways we're actually doing business. People can share that same workspace. It's been done in the private sector for years. We can do that same sort of thing and help save the taxpayer at the end of the day. Standardizing furniture will assist as well because right now, we have three or four different furniture standards throughout the county. We do our best at reutilizing furniture, but as we do some of these larger potential renovations, and we'll get to that in one second here, you know, utilizing the same type of furniture, interconnecting, those types of things really actually helps us save money in the long run. So some short-term recommendations out of this study is to actually take all of technology services and take them from this facility over, well, not all, majority of technology services from this facility over to the Edison Way project. Completely rehabilitate that building to make 100% of the technology services needs and showcase the future of work concepts that are within this master plan so that other departments can understand really what we're talking about when we say hoteling workspace or shared conference space, shared offices, those sorts of things. Again, creating an employee-centric workspace over in building C. That's a place where employees can go and collaborate and do what they need to do. It includes training space. It includes the facility that we currently utilize for the exercise facility, a break space to consolidate all break rooms into that one area over there because it helps us utilize the space differently throughout. Continue to work to determine whether a single point of entry for building A, building B, and building D is doable because curating that space for our employees means that if you go to building D and you end up having to have work over in building A, you're going to have to cross the courtyard to come back to building A. So we need to study that a little bit more and really understand what the benefit to our community is. And then at the direction of this board in October, the downtown court master plan is the next for the update. So that's where we're headed in the short term. In the longer term, we have multiple Ninth Street adjustments that can be made just depending on the staffing levels, working with the different departments to meet the needs. We do have some capital funding currently in the CIP to accomplish some of these things. Northern Nevada Public Health area really needs to be planned. There's a lot of need for the Northern Nevada Public Health over in building B, and as they expand out into areas within building C, we really need to get our arms around what that really looks like specific for them. And then we really want to encourage departments to review what we're doing over at Edison Way so that they can see the concepts and really get comfortable with what we're talking about because this really does have a big impact on Washoe County additional funding. Like, say, space is expensive, the power, the gas, all of those things are very expensive for us to do. We're also looking at bringing other departments into this complex, into some of that space. We've had some initial discussions with the Public Guardian as an example. We're in owned space there, but that's a way for us to get, you know, them from that location, and we can sell that as future surplus. So with that, I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions that you may have regarding facility master planning.
Great. Looking to the board, Vice Chair Herman. Okay, Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Andriola.
Well, I just want to say thank you. It looked like there was even a timeframe in terms of as presented for 10 years, that this would essentially stay on track for a 10-year period, at least anticipated.
I will have to caveat this, that, you know, when I started in 2003, we had this great 10-year plan, and then we had a little downturn in the economy, which kind of threw some things in there, and that's why you update these, and COVID did the same thing. So hopefully, we can keep track on this and keep moving forward, but that's certainly the plan.
Well, I like the fact that it actually, looking at over time, number one, it doesn't look like it's going to have a fiscal impact, at least that's what was noted, and the fact that at this point in time, it looks like the last 10 years at this point in time, and that even the efficiencies put in place in terms of shared space and using best practices and, you know, some of the sustainability that we've seen presented, you know, help to keep costs down. So I appreciate that the folks all looked at all of that, you know, collectively. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah, if I may, you know, this doesn't only impact this one portion of the strategic plan, but you touched on it a little bit. We also have the sustainability goals associated with our strategic plan. And so this ties in with those as well. We looked at all of those things to make sure that the decisions we're making as a county as a whole meet multiple goals. So, thank you.
Commissioner Clark.
There's been involvement with the department heads and line workers here at the complex to see what their needs are and make sure that, you know, it's one thing for management to pick out an area that makes sense from the manager's point of view versus what makes sense for the employees and the department head. So what type of input and type of workshops, or what have you been doing to reach out to our workers?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. So our consultant and our project manager met individually with each department head and their staff that they chose to really understand what their needs are within the facility, what their projections are for space. We didn't do those projections, just, you know, I've seen it done based on population, all these other sorts of things. We met with the department heads and their key staff to understand what their needs were. And then that was put into this plan as far as the needs for the space. We have had interactions with the future of work and understanding kind of how those decisions and policies impact the departments as well. All of those things were done, you know, face-to-face with the departments. We received feedback from them that's been put into this document as well. So I feel that we've done a pretty good job of reaching out to understand the needs of those departments. Now, each one of those departments, as we get to that point, when they say, hey, I'm out of space, I need to do something, that's when we go in and do a deeper dive to really understand how we can reconfigure their space. We've got general reconfiguration ideas within this document, but really getting down to understand, is it a full remodel or is it just portions of remodel that need to be done? Maybe it's just a furniture upgrade. So that is still to come as well as we march through the different phases.
Are those interviews available for us to review, the manager comments and the employee comments that were gone over with the planners? Can we take a look at those, if I wanted to look at those?
Yes.
Is that available?
Absolutely. We can provide that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was wondering, just a few questions, and exciting work. I feel really grateful for the folks who in the 1970s and 80s had a vision for this complex because I think that they were very thoughtful in the way that they laid it out. And I had someone who is in another county who was like, you have the best county complex. And I don't think we realize how special it is unless outside eyes look at it. But on the registrar's office, I know that they need so much more space, and it's seasonal, obviously, but every two years with those mail-in ballots. So was that part of this exercise?
It was a part of this exercise, and really what we've determined is to make some of the, like, main point of interest within building A, to have one local location. We've looked at, how would we really configure that to make the best approach for our citizens? And part of that is actually to take the registrar's office at some other location.
Okay.
There, you know, we have two lease spaces that they keep the machines and all of the other stuff that they need to create an election. We're paying for that. We think we can pull them out and have a separate location for the registrar voter. So that's, we've got a separate master plan kind of just for them to understand what that need is. And so as we get through the end of this election period, that's going to be, you know, one of those projects that rises to the top. How do we deal with that? Because it gets in the way of what other parts of this plan need to take effect.
Great. Well, I'm glad that that's still in the works. And is Edison in the CIP that's, we're going to be approving?
It's actually already currently in there. We used ARPA-SLR funds for the Edison project.
Got it. Okay. And then nonprofits reach out to me about space or other government agencies, but it sounds like we may fill that space with other staffing needs, or are we looking to ever take on tenants?
So we have looked at that various times over the years. The Nevada revised statutes associated with how we lease property and what that looks like have some parameters around what that really looks like. We can certainly take a look at it again as we get a little bit deeper into some of the actual moves that appear here. A lot of the vacant space right now is going to be over in the employee-centric area. So we're looking at, you know, uses there that don't have a lot of customer connection. So potentially, if there are some not-for-profits in the future, or even in a short term where we can, you know, one of the things that this board has given us direction to do is help the not-for-profits that help us really become successful. So that's a concept that we can bake into the planning process.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Any other board comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. So with that, I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the Washoe County Administrative Complex Master Plan Update prepared by Collaborative Design Studio as professional recommendations for the long-term needs of Washoe County administrative facilities and to provide direction to staff to explore financing and implementation strategies for the future needs identified within the master plan.
Thank you. A second? Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. And Madam Clerk, it doesn't look like we have public comment, but do we?
There's nobody signed in.
Thank you very much. With a motion and a second, any questions from the board on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen there, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to item 19, and I will throw it over to Madam Clerk.
Item 19 will be bill number 1908.
Okay.
This is a first reading, introduction to an ordinance revising the Washoe County requirements and schedule of rates and charges for reclaimed water service within Washoe County by removing rates and charges for reclaimed water irrigation service, charges for bulk reclaimed water service subdivision construction, water rights fee, connection privilege fee for new connections and associated deposits. This ordinance amends ordinance number 1535.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have had some previews on this in the past with other presentations, but does the board want to see a staff presentation on this item? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There's nobody signed in.
Okay. Well, with that, is there any board comment or question on this item? I'm not seeing any. So I'm looking for someone just to read this into the record. And/or introduce this, excuse me.
I'm just looking at, so the subject on the agenda language and the subject in the staff report, but I'm looking for the title to make sure that matches with the title and the ordinance itself. I know Dwayne's here.
He is.
Dwayne, does that match the title?
Yes.
In the ordinance? Okay.
Yes.
Well, who would you like to read that paragraph? I have no problem reading that paragraph if you'd like me to.
Oh, into the record?
Yes. The clerk just did, so I feel like it's done.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just need an introduction.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking, yeah, I'm just looking for a board member to introduce.
Okay, I thought, all right.
I'm sorry about that if I was unclear. If a commissioner wants to introduce, and the, where is the number?
19.
The bill is 1908. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Okay, as introduced by Commissioner Andriola. All right. Well, thank you very much for that. We will now move along to item 20. Madam Clerk.
Item 20 is an introduction and a first reading of an, it will be item, or bill number 1909. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, in Article 216, Spanish Springs area, to add the Village Green Community Area modifiers to include provisions related to applicability, exceptions, setbacks, building height, truck delivery areas, utilities, architecture, lighting, exterior sign lighting, parking lot lighting, landscaping, calle de plata, and pyramid way, streetscapes, buffer yards, transportation improvements, and public trail easements, and all other matters necessarily connected thereto or therewith and pertaining thereto.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is none.
Okay. Does the board, would the board like to see a staff presentation on this item? I'm not seeing any need for that, and it's bill number 1909, so I'm looking for someone to introduce.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Oh, now it's on. Madam Chair, I'll introduce bill 1909 as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. All right. With that, we will move along to item 21, and I'm looking to Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 21 is an initiation of a proposed ordinance to amend Washoe County Code, Chapter 65, Safety and Disaster Services. There are a bunch of provisions listed here that can be referenced on the agenda, and then if supported, the board will direct the clerk to set the first reading for April 23, 2024, and the public hearing, and public hearing, second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance for May 14, 2024.
Okay.
Unless Nate tells me I have to read it all.
No, this is not a first reading.
Thank you.
Okay. Then I am looking to the board to see if folks want a staff presentation on this item. I'm not seeing any need for that. So, Madam Clerk, it looks like we have public comment.
Penny Brock. Penny Brock, for the record, I'm coming to you as a taxpayer because this is really confusing. I muddled through some of it. So it's amending to transfer from the county risk manager to the former risk, I don't know, blah, 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 Division of the Comptroller Department, claims from 1,000 to 2,500. They want to expand it to the county manager's authority. So that's my first red flag. More is going to the county manager, giving him more and more power. I don't understand that. And also, it's being bumped up from 25,000 to no more than 150,000. I object unless someone can tell me why this should go to the county manager. What expertise does he have in this area? I would ask you to consider tabling this to provide more information to us, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looking to the rest of the board, see if there's any questions from board members on this item. Commissioner Clark?
I just, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to find out why are we changing this? What's taking place that would cause this change? Does anybody have an answer about that exactly?
Okay. Looks like Mr. West is coming up to.
Commissioner, these changes, Ben West for the record, I'm here as the chair of the Safety Committee because this is related to the Employee Safety Committee. The changes here are made to update the change from county risk manager to the Division of Risk Management within the Comptroller. That change is being made because the, there is no longer a county risk manager position. So that is a division under the Comptroller. So that is where that change is being made. And then the other changes are updating due to changes in the economy over the years since it was last approved to be able to give the Risk Management Division and the Comptroller the ability to settle claims at a higher rate than they did in the past based on the passage of time.
So we don't have a risk manager now. Is there any anticipation of future hiring another risk manager?
Well, risk management is handled now by the Risk Management Division, so we do have senior risk manager, risk management analyst, and then other management analysts in the Risk Management Division. So those are being handled within that division, not by someone with that specific title. Ultimately, the Comptroller serves as the risk manager.
So because we don't have a risk manager, we're going to change the way we're doing this? Isn't this a type of duty that should have been transferred to somebody else, a higher-up, equal position, lateral position, something else versus transferring this to the, parts of this to the manager's office?
It's going to be remaining within the Comptroller's office, not in the county manager's office. So the actual claims made against the county will still be handled through that division as part of the Comptroller.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Mr. West? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Then with that, and did I already call for public comment, Madam Clerk?
If you didn't, there is none.
Okay. Oh, wait, I did. Ms. Brock already spoke. I apologize. Okay. So I am looking to the board to see if folks are ready to propose a motion.
I move to initiate the ordinance and conduct a first reading as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Looking for a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes 421 with Commissioner Clark and the no. Okay, we are going to move on to our public hearings. All right. Item 22, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and I will throw this over to Madam Clerk.
This will be ordinance number 1716. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 2, by adopting Supplement 18 to the Washoe County Code, and all clerical and technical corrections made therein. Supplement 18 codifies ordinances 1627, Building Code 1674, adoption of Supplement 151694, Affordable Housing Trust Fund 1695, Personnel Code 1697, Building Programs 1698, Traffic 1699, Adoption of Supplement 16, 1701, Adoption of Supplement 17, 1702, Side Chosen Street Racing, 1707, Regulation of Lobbyists, and 1708, Various Permits, as formerly Bill Number 1907.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So any will from the board to see a staff report on this item? I'm not seeing anyone. Oh, yes, yes, Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Somebody explained this at one time, why registration of lobbyists and affordable housing and all these different things are all stuck in this one bill.
Yes, and DA Edwards will hopefully cover that.
Sure. All of these ordinances have already been passed, so you've already had the whole debate and all the past, first reading, second reading, passage and everything. So these are all already the law in the county. What this is, is a periodic adoption of them in a batch so that the MutiCode company that puts them in the county code itself will know to take these and put them online so that people can see them when they look up the county code. Otherwise, they just sit in a stack, basically, at the clerk's office, and it's harder for the public to be able to research them and things like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We like to do things in many, many steps over here. I think it's per state law, isn't it, DA Edwards?
Yes, it is. So you adopt ordinances, and if you don't ever adopt a code, a lot of people think it's the same thing.
Right.
They're not the same thing. It's just like the NRS and the Nevada statutes, they're also not the same thing. So the Legislative Council Bureau and the Revisor put it into the bound volumes of the NRS after the legislature's done with all its statutes. They group them and they put them in the binders, and that's, this is the virtual equivalent of that.
Perfect. Okay. So any other board member questions? Not seeing any. So I am looking for a motion on ordinance number 1716.
Madam Chair, I believe it was at 1907. Move to adopt ordinance 1907.
No, it's ordinance number 1716, formerly Bill Number 1907.
Okay. I wrote down 1907. What is the correct number?
1716.
Sorry. But it was formerly 1907.
Yeah, it sure was.
So I'll move to adopt ordinance number 1716 as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are in the second, or yes, the second part of our public hearing, item number 23. So I will throw it over to Ms. Thomas for the first two items on that item.
This is a public hearing that addresses the Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA23-0003, a regulatory zone amendment for case number WRZA23-0003, and Development Code Amendment for case number WDCA23-0003, which is the Sutcliffe Community Area modifiers. The first two portions of this, I will go over, and then we'll kick it over to the clerk. We've got the consideration of a Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt amendments to the Truckee Canyon Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to change the master plan land use designation for five parcels which are listed from rural to commercial and assign a a Master Plan land use designation of commercial to two parcels without a current Master Plan land use designation. And if approved, it authorizes the Chair to sign the resolution to that effect. Secondly, it's to adopt, subject to final approval of the associated Master Plan Amendment and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, an amendment to the Truckee Canyon Regulatory Zone Map to change the regulatory zone for two parcels, APN zero seven nine dash two three oh dash oh one and oh three, from general rural to neighborhood commercial for three parcels, from a specific plan to neighborhood commercial, and to assign a regulatory zone of neighborhood commercial to two parcels without any regulatory zone designation, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect. And then, section three.
If the first two sections are approved, then there will be an introduction and a first reading.
Okay, so we'll do the first two sections, and then we'll go back to you, Madam Clerk. Okay, thank you for that. Does the Board want to see a staff presentation on this item? I'm not seeing anyone who would like that. Okay. Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Okay, so with this item, I am looking for a motion on both the Master Plan Amendment and the adoption, let's see, what is this? Oh, and the, of the regulatory Truckee Canyon, Regulatory Zone Map from the Board.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on those two motions from the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay.
Vice Chair Herman, I need your vote. There we go.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and now, Madam Clerk.
Okay, this will be Bill number nineteen ten, and ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter one-ten, Development Code, Article two-twenty-two, Truckee Canyon Area, to add a new section for the Sutcliffe Community Area modifiers, which designates parcels subject to the modifier, specifies exceptions to the development standards for the neighborhood commercial regulatory zone for the Sutcliffe Community Area, provides for additional residential uses which shall be allowed by right in the Sutcliffe Community Area, and provides for additional commercial uses with, which shall be allowed with a special use permit in the Sutcliffe Community Area, and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
Great, thank you for that. So, now we're looking for someone to read, or introduce item nineteen ten into the record.
I'll move to introduce item, Bill number nineteen ten.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. All right, with that, we are moving on to item twenty-four.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So, the first motion was subparts one and two, am I right?
Yes.
And then what just happened was the introduction of three, right?
Yes.
I'm seeing this number four on here, which is the Sunset-the-Crosby Lodge specific plan.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize to the Board, so we need...
I just think it snuck in at the end.
A...
I don't think the, I, I think Ms. Thomas can just read that whole subsection four part.
Okay.
And then you can vote on it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then, subsection four of the public hearing is Sunset-and-the-Crosby Lodge specific plan that includes three parcels, APN oh seven nine, two three oh, oh four, seven, and eleven. The applicant is the Washoe County Community Services Department, Planning and Building Division, and the subject parcels are located off Sutcliffe Drive and State Route four forty-five close to Pyramid Lake. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, may modify the proposed Master Plan Amendments, and refer back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS two-seventy-eight dash, or point, two-two oh, subsection four, or you may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing.
Okay, so I think I need a final motion on this item to Sunset-the-Crosby Lodge specific plan.
I'll, I'll move to Sunset-the-Crosby Lodge specific plan.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Herman, did you, second? Okay, great. Any questions on that motion from the Board? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you. And thank you, DA Edwards, for keeping us straight on that item. We are now moving to item twenty-four, and Ms. Thomas, if you'll lead us into that.
This is a public hearing. It's a Master Plan Amendment, case number WMPA two-three dash zero zero five, Regulatory Zone Amendment, case number WRZA two-three dash zero zero seven. There are two subsections. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to adopt an amendment to Washoe County Master Plan, South Valley's Master Plan Land Use Map, Appendix B, maps to change the Master Plan designation from rural to rural residential on one parcel totaling seventeen point six-five acres, which is APN oh four six dash oh two point, dash oh six, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect, and to adopt, subject to final approval of the associated Master Plan Amendment by the Board of County Commissioners, and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by regional planning authorities, an amendment to the South Valley's Regulatory Zone Map to change the regulatory zone from general rural one DU dash slash forty acres to medium-density rural, MDR, one DU slash five acres on the same seventeen point six-five acre parcel, which is APN oh four six dash oh four two dash oh six, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to that effect.
Thank you very much, and it looks like we have a staff member up here. Would the Board like to see a staff report? No, all right, looking to the Board? No? Okay. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We do. First, we have Amanda Gunn, followed by Art O'Connor.
Hi, my name is Amanda Gunn, for the record. I am the neighbor to this property. As most of you know, in Washoe Valley, when you drive through the valley anytime, you see lots of water, lots and lots of water. The property in question is currently underwater, and we border this property, but the biggest problem that we have is this property only has one access point, and that access point is not suitable to be broken up into multiple properties, which is what that, that is happening. With that, I mean, you can't get to a property without access, and the, the map specifically states on there that the properties are for, the access is for the two current properties, which is mine and someone else you'll hear from, and this property as well, with one unit. So, taking that one unit and trying to make it multiple units on top of our homes and our access, I had a beautiful PowerPoint presentation prepared, but this is my first time doing this, so you can't see it. You have to believe me that I have lots of pictures. My horse's heads hang over this access in the easement. We, it's our only way to get to our BLM easement as well, which is a second easement on this property. So, using this, this access or any access to try and get to this property is putting the neighbors in a lot of strain. It's not safe. I have small children that come to my property. I have a nephew that's two years old and loves to ride his horse, and if I had to hear that there's going to be multiple cars behind him, I would be terrified. We want to keep Washoe Valley beautiful the way it was designed. We want Mr. O'Connor to be able to build his, his dream home like he wants to, but there's no need to break it up into, he wants to do three properties, and that'll be next, I'm sure. But, build your dream home, bring your animals, love the valley like we love the valley, but make sure it's conducive to the area that's already there, and that it's not going to cause safety issues or a lot of other issues in addition to what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Art O'Connor, followed by Jason Stroll.
I'm the developer. I get ten minutes.
Uh, let me think. Did we do, is that how it is done? Typically, isn't it a staff report, or an appeal is ten minutes?
Yeah, we, we don't have that here, so...
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Connor. If it was an appeal, it would be ten minutes, and if there was a staff, you know, the staff could certainly review your request, but yes, we'll, we'll give you your three-minute time, and it looks like someone else is here with you, so maybe they can continue your remarks on the, that second part.
Okay, so this is not an appeal.
No.
It's a normal procedure.
Yes, sir.
From a approval by the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
And now you have to approve it.
We don't have to approve it, but we're, we're reviewing it today, certainly, and listening to you as a public commenter as part of this. Yes, sir.
I, I'm, well, there's a mistake then, because I got ten minutes at the Planning Commission. Why don't I get ten minutes here?
It's not something that this Board has done in the past.
When the... Hello? Help me out here.
I'm trying to look through my emails to confirm. I believe that I had an email from somebody at the county manager's office.
That said ten minutes?
That said it was up to the discretion of the Chair.
Of the Chair. All right, well, let's just...
The original request was fifteen, and I knew it wasn't fifteen minutes.
Okay, all right.
Forty Y key for the record.
Thank you. All right, well, let's put ten minutes on the clock. Typically, on these type of things, we do not have the applicant present. It's a staff presentation. It's only if there is an appeal, but seeing as that there was miscommunication, certainly we'll put ten minutes on the clock.
Appreciate that. All right, so I have a slideshow here. This, I figure, I'm seventy-seven, this is my last home, and what I'm trying to do is recover the correct zoning that this parcel had. Where is, so, this is a non-conforming parcel in an otherwise zone for forty acres. There's only seventeen point six-five acres in this parcel. This parcel, if we look at this map, where is, who stole the pointer? Okay, so there's a monument on this road for the town of Ofer. Why is that important? Here's the monument. Here's the history of Ofer. The map for Ofer was actually recorded six months before Nevada became a state. You will note that Washoe County was founded in eighteen sixty-one, before Nevada was a state, when it was in the Territory. So, you'll see on this town, town line that there was a deed to Douglas for a portion after Nevada became a state. So, this is town Ofer, and you will see my lot on there, and there were at least, at least six whole lots from the town of Ofer underneath my property. So, that is prior zoning. Here's the map of, it's recorded. Here is the map. You will note that there is stuff in red on there. You could record in color back then. It was the advent of Xerox that made us record in black and white. And there's two pages in that map. Missed that falling-down rock mound that's over there on the off-ramp as you're going north to go to Davis Creek Park. That is Davis's home. It's a hundred and sixty years old. And so, this property was owned by John Casey, and Serper bought it when Casey died out of the, the trust, and he first created my lot. You will notice that there's twenty-some-odd acres in it, and there's a diagonal line that runs along there. That's the old V and T right-of-way. So, and then he did a boundary line adjustment, and he sized my lot for what it is now. The point I want to make is the county signed this map. The county signed this map. That means it must have conformed to the zoning at that time, but I think we were in the land use thing. I was on the City Advisory Board, and we approved the land use stuff, and so, I think that's how it got there. So, here's my proposed site plan with the three lots that I have, and you just heard the Guns protest. So, here's where the easement came from. Here's the Record of Survey, forty-one eighty. There's no easement. But here it is. They created the easement to go to the center of my lot, before the Guns and Jason's property were created. And here's the map that I filed. I'm a registered land surveyor and a registered civil engineer. Lookie there. There are the two lots. It has the easement running right through them. There's some notes over there on the side. Let's look at those notes. In particular, let's look at number three. Makayla Way is a private access and utilities, public and private, easement for the benefit of APN oh six, that's me, and the two parcels being created by this map. So, it, right there, it says, three parcels can use it. Makayla Way will use the existing driveway access from Old Highway three ninety-five. Use of this easement by APN oh six, that's my lot, is limited to not more than two lots, not one, like Ms. Gunn said. Oh, okay, here's the easement that they, they recorded, and there it is. And it, it said there was a private, there was only an access easement. I changed that when I filed the parcel map to an access and public utility easement. And so, here's the page three of the deed, just so you don't know, it's, I didn't, you know, I didn't hide anything from you, but it shows where the easement was. So, here's the proposed solution. I proposed six different solutions to these guys, other than using the existing easement. They have rejected every single one of them. I moved the easement, you know, put it on the south side of Jason's property, moved it to the north side of Gunn's property, you know, I just, all kinds of options. They don't want me to use the easement. They want that thing to be a single seventeen point six-five acre lot and only one house on it, even though note three said I could have two lots on it. I am going to take the north lot, and to access the north lot, the third lot, I'm going to do this. I'm going to come off on the NDOT property and get a, either buy it from them or get an encroachment permit, and that's how I'm going to access the north lot. But that'll be settled with a parcel map. Okay, at the previous Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of noise about, from the people on the west side of three ninety-five, about me de-watering their wells on the north side. My master's work was in hydrology, and that just isn't going to happen. As you can see from this thing, it's a thousand feet to those people over there. There's no way my well, which is downstream from theirs, is going to de-water their wells. Here's a well log from Derrick's Well. Mrs. Gunn spoke just now. This is their well log, and you'll notice the drawdown after three hours of continuous pumping was only thirty-nine feet. That's this cone of depression of radius of thirty-nine feet. It didn't even get to the old three ninety-five, you know, the road. It didn't get to the road. So, nothing is going to happen to the people on the west side of three ninety-five from my development. This is what the house will look like, and I appreciate you guys listening to me, and I hope that you will let me build my house. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Looking to the Board to see if there's any questions. Okay, thank you. And I think we have another public commenter, Madam Clerk?
We do. Jason Stroll.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jason Stroll, and I live at thirty-one seventy Makayla Way with my wife, Rachel Hahn. This is my first county commission meeting I've ever been to, and the first time I've ever had to argue about an easement. Today, I'm here to express our strong opposition to the proposed Master Plan and zoning amendments currently under consideration today. We live on our dream property with our cat, three dogs, four horses, two miniature donkeys, and six goats. Thirty-one eighty Makayla Way, the site of the proposed amendments, has served as a cow pasture until it was purchased in the fall of twenty twenty-two by Mr. O'Connor. We just want to live and enjoy our property with our animals. The proposed amendments are not required for Mr. O'Connor and his family to build their home and enjoy their property. To my understanding, there have been no building permits submitted, nor has any significant workman done to the property. The intent is development. If these amendments are approved and the zoning is changed, he will... If these amendments are approved and the zoning is changed, he will be able to parcel out this property. Our opposition centers around the fact that the access to 3180 Makayla Way relies on an easement through our property. The proposed amendments and the ability to subdivide is not within the original ten of the master plan or the easement, and any changes would place an undue burden on the use of the easement and the surrounding landowners. I had a PowerPoint presentation, but it's not up. But it's basically the same maps that Mr. O'Connor showed. The access point lies directly through our property to access it. It's a 25-foot piece of pasture to access it. It's great. Like, we literally live in our dream property. We can gallop our horses up this easement. It's perfect. We express like the same concerns that Mandy has, where what does this do for traffic? How does this impact us? And when we originally purchased our property, it was just cows on there. So, I mean, we're not trying to prohibit Mr. O'Connor from accessing his property or utilizing it to enjoy it for his own peaceful purposes. We just really don't want it to get subdivided. There's a 400-acre BLM parcel that we go to every day that we use to get through the easement there. We walk our dogs, we'll take our goats and our donkeys and ride our horses out there. It borders the Franktown-Equestrian area over there. Commissioner Clark. I don't know, we're at your mercy. Like, this is the last stop. I think it's, we're just trying to prevent this from happening. Thank you so much for your time. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Wyke, could you just outline to the board what's before us today? Because my understanding is if this is approved, it will need to go through some other reviews by staff on traffic. We're not looking at traffic today, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, Courtney Wyke, senior planner for the record. Correct. The item before you today is a request for a master plan amendment, as well as a regulatory zone amendment, which would allow for the possibility for this parcel, which is 17 acres, to be maximum subdivided into three separate parcels through a future parcel map application and review process. Things like adequate access or acquiring appropriate water rights would be addressed through that process. The application was sent to the state's Water Resources Department and the county's water expert, and no concerns were raised. And the property was not identified as being in a flood zone, though there was acknowledgement that nearby properties do have more flood constraints. So essentially, today, it is merely a request to change the master plan and regulatory zone designations.
Thank you.
If that's helpful and answers your question.
Thank you very much. Looking to the board on any questions, comments? I'm not seeing any. With that, I am looking for a motion on this master plan amendment. Well, I'm happy to make a motion then. I move to adopt the master plan amendment, case number WMPA 230005, and adopt amendment to the South Valleys area, planning area, and move to adopt, let's see, the master plan amendment and finding in conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan Regulatory Zone Amendment, case WRZA 23-0007, which amends the South Valley Regulatory Zone map for one parcel, APN 04604206, from general rural to medium-density rural. And I can make the findings. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Motion and a second. Any questions from the motion, on the motion from the board? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes four to one with Commissioner Clark and the opposition. Okay, thank you very much. We will, we are now at the end of our public hearings, and we will now move into item 25, our public comment. Ms. Thomas?
Madam Chair, comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, I have several items to address. First of all, it was a disappointment that our first meeting in April was again canceled. This is the fourth month in a row. So I hope that the chairman will reconsider canceling the meeting, one meeting a month. Secondly, I again ask that Commissioner Herman's resolution on paper ballots and hand counting be on the agenda. I still have the contracts I have not asked for since January and February. They did send me something last week, but again, I needed a passcode to access those contracts. I got into the runback one, but it was not the contract. It was more like some kind of information to whoever asked for information. So then I couldn't get back in to look at whatever else they sent me, so I've asked them to send me these contracts PDF. All the contracts for the county should be like what Commissioner Andriola has proposed, that all of her spending should be online for us, the taxpayers, to look at. The same thing with contracts. I don't understand why they're not online. But more importantly, I don't understand why the election contracts, and including strategic rows, are not available to us, the taxpayer. Secondly, in the report on the budget, it said they want to hire two staff for the animals. We hear that our assessor office needs additional staff. So I would hope that, that seems more of a priority than the animals, even though I love animals. When you have to choose between the animals or the sources of income coming in, that would be how you would weigh that. Also, it's interesting that the budget is under the hired county manager. We have an elected treasurer. I don't understand why the budget isn't under the treasurer. I do feel it should be under someone that's been elected for accountability. The second thing is the critical infrastructure of elections. There again, that should be under an elected officer, an elected official. And in the rural counties, it's under the county clerk. So I would suggest that we put the elections under the county clerk, and maybe this, that would help to clear up a lot of the problems we're having with our elections. Both the budget and our elections are under our hired county manager, which means there's no accountability to weigh the taxpayer or the voters. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have emails that were submitted that will be placed on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move into item 26, Ms. Thomas.
Item 26 is for commissioner and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us? Okay, looking to the board to see if folks... Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate what I'd said earlier about court security. I'm going to find out why, I'd like somebody to report to us why none of those security issues have been implemented from approximately 2019 until now. I'd like to also find out about this Greg Fair, the owner of the Barber College, and to find out when he can start helping the homeless folks that want haircuts, and also the seniors that want a haircut at a reduced rate. He's willing to do that. And then there was a van that was bought by... Let me open my text from the other day. From Peter Listner, I got the text. We bought that, and I'm asking him about the van, and his answer is, "We bought that van in March of 2017 for $19,530. It's supposed to belong to the Cold Springs seniors, nobody, nobody but, nobody else. But there have been problems about where to keep it. They could safely keep it at the family center out there." So as I go on these senior lunches, Cold Springs is way out, you know, almost the California border. The seniors know that they had a van donated to them. They want to know why it's not in service, why it isn't being used. Some of these folks can't drive in. They want to come into Costco or the Trader Joe's or see a movie or something, dental appointments, doctor's appointments. I've located several drivers that have got all the certifications and be willing to volunteer to do that. What's missing is the van. I can't seem to find out where the van got stored, if it's still in the county's possession. I'd like to find out more about that. So it's a service that the seniors would like to have reenacted or repurposed and reused for what the purpose was that was initially purchased. Apparently, they want to, they would like a ride into town, and they have a vehicle. We have a driver, and the van's missing. So I want to find out more about where the county is storing that van. So haircuts, and then the van, and then the courthouse. Those are my comments and questions that I'd like to get answered. Thank you.
Vice Chair Herman?
If I turn this on, you can hear me. I think I am wondering where that is. Also, as I was the one that arranged to purchase it, and it was supposed to belong to the seniors at Cold Springs. And for a time, there was, it was a very nice white van, and we had different people that drove it and were to drive it, drive the people to town when they needed to make a trip to the doctors and that sort of thing. And so I would like to know where that van is as well.
Great, let's not have anyone else pipe in on the van, just because it's going to create a public... We don't have it agendized today, but anything else, Vice Chair? Go ahead.
Another thing, yeah. I'm getting a little bit concerned because we're having a very moist spring, and I haven't heard anything about the mosquito problem, which is, you know, something that we need to plan ahead for because we lost our helicopter guy, and so they were using some drones, and that didn't work. And so then they were using some different kind of project. So I'd like to have a report on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick update. I want to let you and my fellow commissioners know that I won't be in attendance on Tuesday. I'm going to be at the upcoming NACO-appointed Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education. So if you have any ideas or suggestions, please let me know before Tuesday, and I'd be happy to represent you down in Vegas.
Thank you for representing us. It's great to have a Washoe voice on that board, so I can't wait to hear all the things that you end up doing. DA Edwards, could you just, for future land use discussions, could we just get it clear on the record today? And then will you remind me, please, on the future land use discussions? When, if board members vote no, which is perfectly fine, we ask that they look at whether the findings have been met. Is that correct? And we need to try to do that just in case of future litigation?
I would prefer that the yes and the no put, you know, findings on the record. It is not mandatory. You know, the record is the record. And if the record supports the action, then that's legally viable and defensible. But it's easier for us, if we end up in court, to have, you know, the commissioner that made the motion or the commissioner that opposed the motion stating why they're making the motion or why they're opposing the motion. That we could say, "Look, Your Honor, here's the reasoning right here." And the judge usually will say, "Well, I'm not going to second-guess that," you know. But it's not mandatory. So it's preferred, and we would like it, I guess.
Okay, so maybe you can help me in the future, and we'll work together. Tag-team that.
Sure.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to also ask Mr. Edwards, if the motion carries, and in this case today, I voted in the opposition quite a few times, but the motion carries, is there any chance of being sued?
What, the county?
Yeah, the county.
Yeah, the county can be sued on any of those.
It could sue anybody anytime. I understand that, but what's the likelihood of, if the person asking for a vote, and they get a vote in affirmative to them, do, would I still have to say why I didn't vote for it? And would the other people who did vote for it still have to say why they did?
It's unlikely. And it's, you know, it's unlikely that the county will lose in any of those kind of challenges because the courts give deference to what the county did. So that's the starting point.
Sure. But the motion carried today, is what I'm saying, all the times. So it carried. On that, I've got to tell you, a motion carried at one of our last meetings about me not supporting the sleeping-in-your-car ordinance, for lack of a better term. And I got chewed out by the mayor of Sparks and the mayor of Reno over that. Even though the measure carried, they got what they wanted. So it almost was, almost vindictive on their part to attack me on social media and in other places because what they, they got what they wanted. What do they care if, how I voted? But to take it to that level of almost political bullying, I thought was outrageous. It kind of ties in with what you said. I didn't have to give my reason why I didn't vote for it. The motion carried, the people got, they supported the idea that they wanted the county to vote that in play, and it did get in play, and, but they're still angry. So where does the, where does this anginess come from when you, when you win the argument, but you're still pissed? Just a question.
Yeah, I take that as a rhetorical question because I don't know where the anginess comes from. I think that's a pretty broad, that's a pretty broad question. You know, I took philosophy at the university. I think that we covered some of that, you know? I don't know where the anger comes from in general in various contexts. I think that context is a little bit different than this context, but I understand your point. My point, I think, to the chair's question about land use applications specifically, as in a property owner applying to do something with their land, it's our preference that the movement and anybody opposing it state, you know, why they're doing what they're doing on the record. I think, so that's, that's where I'm coming at. I do understand the points that you're making, though.
Should we, on all votes from this point forward, then pro or con, give a reason why you voted that way?
That's up, that's up to you. You know, vote your conscience.
Very well.
Thank you. All right, yes, Commissioner Andriola?
I just wanted to thank staff, the county manager and staff. You know, I've had a multitude of conversations with Mark Camp when he was the clerk of Nye County, and then now that he's not the clerk of Nye County, requesting that he do a presentation to the board. And I had met on several occasions with the county manager with that request, and I understand that staff is pursuing that opportunity. And I think it would be really helpful to have him share his experience. I know he's no longer officially the clerk in Nye County, but he has a multitude of experience and understands some of the constraints statutorily in terms of specifically about elections. So I'm looking forward to that coming down the pike somewhere. So I'd just like to recognize the county manager and staff for pursuing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Seeing none? Thank you for a great meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you for a great meeting. We are adjourned.